Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 18th meeting of the Assemblyman's City Council. My name's Tom Odell. I have the pleasure and honor of serving as the Mayor of the city. And I'd like to welcome everyone who's here this evening. I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll at this point.
Mayor?
I'm here. Present.
Councilmember John Curly.
Here.
President.
President.
Here.
Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
Great, thank you. This is the point where we have the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask us all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, but afterward, I'm going to ask us to remain standing for a minute in honor or in recognition, rather, not honor, recognition of the two severe weather events that have happened on the world, in the world lately. The disaster in the Philippines, and we're only finding out the total magnitude of that right now, and also in our own country, the Midwest, Illinois, Indiana, and several other states got badly hammered by bad weather last night. And many people in both places have lost their lives. Many people in both places are wondering what they're going to do for shelter and food and water over the next several days. So let's all rise, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Curly to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was especially struck when, in reading the paper about the event in the Midwest last night, the worst place, worst-hit place, was a small city halfway between Chicago and St. Louis, whose name was Washington. That appears to be the locus of all the deaths, at least that we know of so far. And they had an F-4 tornado, which basically leveled the place. Looked like, looks like there may have been several dozen tornados involved in the whole outbreak, really weird for this time of the year. At this point, I'm going to ask the council for approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. The agenda's approved unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have a long executive session at the end of the meeting today. It's a potential litigation matter, so hopefully we'll get through some of these items and we'll get to the executive session.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We do have a very long business meeting tonight. There will be a number of things, and as the City Manager just said, we do have a number of items for executive this evening. The executive session is estimated to take a good hour, if not more. There will be no action following, and at the time we do break for executive, I will remind us all of that and the potential litigation issues. This is the point in our agenda where we have the student liaison reports, and I'm pleased to see we have three of our younger citizens here with us this evening. We have Hamilton Woznick from Skyline, Lauren Mittenthal, and Lauren, who's with you?
Megan Cantrell.
I'm ASB Secretary.
Okay. All right. I'm going to start with Skyline because they're first on the list, and so, do you want to go, sir?
Yes, sir. All right. Good evening, all. So unfortunately, on Friday, football was kicked out of the state playoffs by a rough and tough federal away team. We lost 26 to 20. I can't really say much more than that, but we finished the season Kinko champions, so, you know, got a banner up in the gym. Soccer, unfortunately, was also kicked out of state this weekend in a 6 to 5 loss in penalty kicks against Issaquah. Volleyball placed seventh in state over the weekend, and test placed second in the state. Now, coming up, our focus is shifting more from athletics. You'll see me, you'll hear me talking more about charitable giving. We have decided we're going to go with the Ben Towney Foundation, which focuses on pediatric cancer research. Now, this is a new charity to Skyline, and members of the community are welcome and are probably, I'm trying to find the word for it, encouraged to come and donate at our school. I think you just go into the front office and talk to Ms. Dona, who's our secretary there. We're also going to be doing some more local work by asking our students for blankets for Tent City and possibly providing some meals there, so that's our plan. Thank you, all.
Thank you, sir. Eastlake, would you guys reintroduce yourselves again because I did not catch your names?
So I'm Lauren Mittenthal, and I'm ASB Public Relations Officer.
And I'm Megan Cantrell, and I'm ASB Secretary.
So to start off, I was going to talk about our new leadership teacher this year. His name is Don Bartel, and he is the Eastlake Football head coach as well. We are very lucky to have him as our leadership teacher this year because he has had a great impact on just the overall school culture at Eastlake. Want to talk about Wolf Strong?
Yeah, and so the football team mantra was Wolf Strong, Pack Strong. And so our leadership team kind of adopted that, and we're working on making every Eastlake student just say, hey, I kind of like this place this year.
And then our girls swim and dive team placed fifth in districts, and our swim and dive coach, Kate Agnew, was titled Coach of the Year. And our football team won this past week, and so we play on Saturday in the quarterfinals against Camus, which is the number one team in state. And winter sports started today. I came straight from basketball practice, so it was the first day today. And we've also had many college representatives come to our school from various colleges, so juniors and seniors can come and get information about different colleges, so that's been really helpful for upcoming college students, so, yeah.
That it?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, ladies. Very helpful.
Good job.
At this point, the three of you are free to either stay or go if you have other things to do. We appreciate your coming. It's always great to hear from our students about what's going on around the schools because my kids are long gone, so I have trouble keeping up. But thank you very much for your updates. It is appreciated.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Hamilton, previous school representatives when they were here, actually, the state, Skyline, had championships on the football and the soccer and the swimming, so what's going on, man?
They lost their mojo, you know? It's just, just one of those years, you know? Just one of those years.
Just kidding.
They're just getting ready for next year.
We'll cheer for Eastlake this year, huh?
Eastlake and Eastside Catholic are still in it. They're both still in it.
Okay. Next on our agenda is a section called Presentations and Proclamations. We don't have any proclamations tonight, but we do have a presentation, right, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. This is a community center project. You wanted to give, present you a 60% design process. We just completed the 60% design. We got our consultants are here. Our park director is going to introduce them. And at the end of the presentations, that we will hopefully have some questions and answer sessions, and then we'll get a direction from council to move forward, whichever direction the council wants us to move. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jessie.
Thank you, Ben. Mr. Mayor and the members of the council, thank you for having us here tonight. As Ben mentioned, we have completed our 60% design, but I think the information you're probably most interested in is actually the 60% cost estimate. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our architecture team from BRS. Keith Hayes is here tonight, and Craig Buck, I believe you've met them both previously. And also Cynthia Liebman is with the team as well. Craig?
Is he going to show up on the? Okay, hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to give you a update on the cost estimate and the design progress for our 60% design of the Community Recreation and Aquatics Center. The way I'd like to do this is I'd like to first give you a very brief update on the building design. We were here September 10th, and we walked through in detail through this building. We walked through both upper and lower floors, as well as with the site. We've spent a lot of time refining the program, refining the plans, but what you need to know is effectively, in this drawing that you're looking at, we've been able to maintain all of the program, and while we've been doing lots of little tweaks and adjustments, essentially, it's the same building that we had for you in September 10th, okay? Now, at the same time, we've been looking for cost-saving opportunities wherever we could, and I'll go through some of those adjustments. But effectively, the only thing of substance difference about this drawing that you're seeing is a flip-flop or a switch of where the large gymnasium is and the small gymnasium on the bottom of that diagram. We flipped them so that the smaller gymnasium is closer to the library. I'm going to jump to the lower floor, and again, no significant changes here. All the functionality, all the program spaces, effectively kept the same, except for that gymnasium switch. Now, there is one thing that we were able to do. One of the comments that we got from this council last time was, if there are any two-story spaces or high-volume spaces, if there's any way that we can look at those and try to capture those and make them more usable, effectively, since we're buying the walls, since we're buying those at least one floor, can we capture those? And we did look at that, and we looked at some of these areas that were being used as mechanical wells. Of significance, between the two spaces where the gymnasiums are shown, you'll see that there is a sort of a gray area, which is a mechanical space, this area right here. On that lower level, by reconfiguring it where it was, if I pop back up to the first floor, what we're able to do is suggest that the mechanical units could raise up, in this case, get onto the roof. They're still screened, so they're still not part of our view, but we were able to show an option where we're able to capture another 1,600 square feet of usable space. It did a couple of things for us. It made more use and better use of the space. It also broke down some visual barriers between the two gyms, and it made it a lot more flexible. So I'll show you how that plays out in our cost estimating, but I just wanted to reflect what those changes have been to the plan. So here is what we're calling our base building. So these shaded areas are all these pieces, and I know you've got the detail of the estimate in your packets, but I want to go over them a little bit more specifically. So what you're seeing here is the lower level and the upper level. Everything that is shown in green is what is in the base price, or the base building. All of these areas now cover the essential elements of our program, okay? What you'll notice is not included in this is that second gymnasium. That's the most obvious one. But let's go over some of these things that we're calling add alternates. And again, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to get an idea of what the base building would be, or the minimum building, and then we're trying to identify those things which we can consider additive. And by doing so, we can control the pricing effort, meaning that at bid date, we can get prices for a whole series of different elements. If the prices are favorable, we'll be able to include those things. So those kind of things that we broke, oh, and I should also mention that when identifying those things that can be pulled out or identified as alternatives, we tried to find those things that would be the least disruptive to the overall goal of the program, from an operations' point of view, from a constructibility point of view, from an impact to the site, and from an overall aesthetic. We certainly wouldn't want to do something that would seem like only half the building was built, for example. We'd want it to be, feel like a complete project at every step of the process. So this base building that we're looking at right now is about 55,000 square feet. So some of the alternatives that we identified, first here is a water slide. That would go effectively on the outside of the building. It's identified at about $475,000. The next one would be this gymnasium. Now, we've included a small gymnasium. This would be an additive gymnasium. It would effectively triple the space available for high-volume active sports. It's identified at about 8,000 square feet. Now, once we have all this high-volume space, we can add a running track. The running track is something that, again, the volume is already built. It would be suspended within that volume. You'd think it would be free space. You know, we've got all the expensive part done. The truth is that there is still some cost. It's not as expensive, obviously, as building brand-new space, but it's identified here at about 4,200, 4,300 square feet. And then this space that I identified earlier, this captured space, which is really the space above our mechanical area, we can tie it in with this running track, tie it in between these gyms, about 1,600 square feet, about 100,000 square. Again, that's very affordable space, and again, it's something that we hadn't shown you prior, but it's an alternate. So when the whole building is built out and all these phases, whether they're done initially or in the future, are done, we're about 69,000 square feet. Costs. So what we're looking at here is a base bid, and that, remember, that's that first drawing I showed you of the green areas of about $32 million. Now, the way that breaks down when comparing it to the 30% estimate, you have to remember that that includes the building, it includes our parking lot, which is our structured parking garage, and it includes all of those site work, the loop roads, the access roads, et cetera. The building itself, at 30%, we had estimated it to be about $17.1 million, and this is of that 32 up on the screen. Currently, we're estimating at 60% to be 15.4. So we had a drop of about $1.7 million in the building. The parking garage effectively stayed the same. Its capacity did not change. A few refinements in the details. We're projecting it to be lower in costs by about $200,000. And the overall site, similarly, we did a lot of work with the storm drainage. We're projecting a savings of about $330,000 from where we were at 30%. All told, those pieces that we can control are about $2.7 million lower than we were at the 30%. Now, the reason we can do that is because the design's progressed. We have more details, we're more confident in what we're projecting in terms of quantities. We have a better sense of, we're a little bit closer now to bid date, so all of those played into this idea that we've got about potentially $2.7 million in savings from where we were. These alternates are all listed here. Total project right now is about 34.5 if all of the alternates were included. Now, that compares to about 35.4, and I've got a summary slide to show you in a second, and that's where we were at 30%. So again, 60% design estimate, just so that you've got the detail and understand what's included in that, there's the building, structured parking, the site costs, of course, sales tax are included, all of our soft costs, furniture, fixtures, equipment, all of the fees that go around that. There's a 10% contingency included that you see here. It's $2.9 million. And then, bottom line there, that got us to our $32 million number, and then with the additives, we're at that 34.5. I should also note that when thinking about this entire budget, I note the contingency of $2.9 million. There is another contingency built into this for inflation, and we've added about a half million dollars for anticipated inflation before we get to the midpoint of construction, which is what we're really using as our bid date. So that's a total of about $3.4 million in here of contingencies, and that's, it's really necessary, but it's worth explaining as to how we got to that 3.2 number for the building and 3.4, I mean, $34 million number for the total project. So as a comparison, here's how it compared out. You see that the square footage has gone up just slightly. That is really because of that added space on that mezzanine that I mentioned, that fitness number, that 1,600 square feet or so. So effectively, the square footage is about the same, and the cost has come down about 900,000 as a total project. So that's where we are, trying to keep apples to apples as best we can, but that's where we are in terms of where the project goes. The key number here, I think, to look at is the total cost before looking at the alternates, because part of what we've done is we've shifted some spaces around. There was a large gym in the first iteration we showed you at 30%. Now we're showing a small gym. That combined with some savings we found in the buildings and the systems really are the reason behind those two numbers, the 34.6 and the 32 that you're seeing on that upper line. But we also understand that 34.5 million, where we are right now, or 32, however you want to look at it, is not 30 million, you know? And the goal here was to get as close to 30 million as we could. So we came to you today with another option. This option gets us very, very close to where we want to be, but the only way we can get there is by changing something. We can't change necessarily the cost of the construction. The timing is locked in. The thing we can affect is what we build, and that affects program. So I want to show you an option for your consideration. I'll walk you through it quickly because you haven't seen this. What you're seeing now is that that upper floor plan, or that level that you walk in on, and effectively, what you're seeing here is essentially no change. We're suggesting that this upper level, for the most part, is the same as it was in the other option. What's different is the gymnasium. What we're doing here is we're actually including the larger gymnasium. I know that sounds counterproductive, you know? We're actually adding more space here, but I'll explain it in a second. And then you're also seeing that there's a running track included in this option. Now, it's a small running track. It's just encompassed in the gym itself. It goes from 11 laps a mile, from what I showed you previously, to about 17 laps a mile, so it's quite reduced, but it's still a program element. Now, the change, and the reason we're able to affect change is because we changed the lower level. Significantly, what has changed on this part is the aquatics area. Now, the only thing that we can do, and as you can see from this diagram, that where we used to have a lap pool, which is the significant change, there's no lap pool. We've taken some of the fitness areas and moved it in where the lap pool was. So effectively, we've shifted space. The lap pool, or the aquatics area, we're imagining that's now a multipurpose pool. It's a singular temperature. There are lap lanes, there are exercise and program areas, there's a zero beach or infant or learn to swim area, and then there's some features for fun. But effectively, it goes from about 11,000 square feet of an auditorium to about 7,000 square feet. And now, the net for us, in terms of overall square footage, is that we actually increase our square footage just slightly. So you see, how can we do that? How can we have a bigger gymnasium? How can we have this running track? And yet, how can we get closer to our budget? Well, the way we do it is by eliminating or trading out that aquatic space, which is quite expensive, we can buy some less expensive space, namely gymnasium and track space, and that's effectively how we've done it. Now, when doing this option, we work closely with the YMCA, with the operators, because we wanted to make sure that we didn't suggest something that was not feasible operationally. And so the programs here that are included meet their minimum needs to operate the YMCA. And so that's how we came up with the balance of how much aquatic could we take away? How much fitness do we need to keep? And what kind of gym would we need to make a balance? So we're still trying to meet the needs of as many people as possible across as many age groups as possible, and try to keep an absolute flexibility in terms of the kinds of programs we're offering. Is it the same? No, it's not the same, but it's still a viable option. So what does this mean? So now, we're, by doing this, we can get our building costs down to about $14.4 million. The parking and the site costs are fixed. They don't change with a smaller building. We still have, we still want to build the same amount of parking. We've sort of reached that critical mass, and we want to keep it. Construction costs then go to about 2.7, then you add tax, soft costs, et cetera. Everything there is kind of linked in a proportional way, and that gets us very close to that $30 million number. Now, I should say that this has the $2.7 million in contingency. We've also kept the $500,000 in there, I mentioned, for inflation factor, so we still have a healthy contingency on top of this project as well. So we know with fairly good confidence that we can get here to this $30 million with this reduced program. So those are the summaries of the kind of the program and the costs. I wanted to just talk a little bit about timeline. Where we are right now is in this beginning of the construction document phase. We're 60% done with the design, and if we move forward, then we can get to our permit review, we can get to our bidding, and basically, our goal is just to get into the ground by June, basically, so that we can take the best advantage of the weather, because we know that we've got a volatile site, and we want to make sure it is as dry as possible. And so our window of opportunity to build is quite narrow, because we need to wrap up all of our groundwork, all of our site work, all of the digging in the ground by September. So I think the thing to know about the timeline is, here it is, we're still on track with our current plan. If we do want to look at an alternate program, a reduced plan like I mentioned, there will be some time we'll need to go back and sort of retool a bit. The risk to us is that we won't meet necessarily that June date, because we'll be set back a couple of months. The net effect of it is we'll probably have to wait until the next cycle of dry land or that window of opportunity, so that the risk, I guess, would be pushing us out 12 months before we can actually start. Even though the redesign and things like that won't take that long, to be practical, that's when we would want to start that construction. That June window is really where we want to hit. So the net effect would be a delay of another year. That's all I had as a brief summary. I'd like to answer any questions, and I'd like to invite Keith to come up with me and answer any questions that we can that you may have.
I'd like to see a comparison side by side of the two pool areas, the proposed reduced sized, and the other one, to know what we're trading off one for the other if we went that route.
In terms of the diagrams, or would you like to just describe basically what you've got? I certainly have the numbers in terms of square footages.
And lazy river and all that kind of things.
Right. So do we have a-
Maybe both, maybe start with the verbal or-
Yeah, well, let me pull the drawings up, and we can at least use those as a reference. Let me back up to the original pool. Almost there. There we go. So in this diagram, what you're seeing is that there's a full six-lane pool. That is at a different temperature, or at an appropriate temperature for fitness swimming, so it's a cooler water pool. That's, and then in terms of the leisure pool, you're seeing in this particular arrangement, we've got a fairly long lazy river. I'm going to use this pointer here to point things out. So we've got our lazy river, which is fairly extensive. This is a zero beach entry right here, so this is basically learn to swim, infant swim. It's our accessible way into the pool. We've got an activity zone here with some play features, and we've got a programming zone basically in here. You know, there's open play, basketballs, that's volleyball, that sort of thing, but also significantly, it's for programming, for learning how to swim. So if we jump to the-
What's the square footage?
Yes, the overall, oh, go ahead.
It's 11,000 square feet.
11,000 square feet for the net, all the auditorium space together.
But what's the lap versus the other?
Lap versus the other.
I mean, no, but I mean, if you-
The combined?
No, I don't want the combined. I want the individual recreational portion and the lap portion.
Oh, okay. We'll get that for you.
Councilmember, the lap pool is 5,300 square feet, and the leisure pool is 5,800 square feet approximately.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jared?
Yes, a couple of questions. When you talked about the 34.5 million, you said that was including the equipment inside the building. Is that the equipment that the Y is talking about?
Go ahead.
An excellent catch. No, the, under the agreement with YMCA, they'll provide the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, but there is some minor equipment that we build in. When we describe it, FF and E is anything that falls out when you turn the building upside down, so this is the stuff that would stay attached.
I see. And the other point I was going to make, as I mentioned before, that we actually get back 0.85% of the sales tax that we pay, so that's another 200,000. You could reduce to 34.5. You don't seem to want to do that.
We're trying not to sharpen our pencil that much, Councilman.
I'm going to go to the City Manager first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Craig, for my clarification, so $34.5 million is the revised estimate. If you bring that estimate on the screen, please.
Yes.
By the way, thank you, and Jessie, and- By the way, thank you, and Jesse, and all of our consultants that are working to sharpen the pencil, bring the cost estimate where it needs to be. And that includes $3.4 million roughly, inflation contingency, and also the project contingency. Is that correct? 34.5, so the 10 percent construction, project contingency, 2.9 and a half a million dollars for, so 3.4 million. If you add it, another 200,000, the councilmember Jaren is talking about, the credit that we get from the sales tax, I wish we could have got a lot more, but that's all we get. That's $3.6 million. So then, project would be roughly about, within $900,000, the number that we've been talking about it. Is that pretty much what the numbers are?
Yes, that math is correct.
Right. Just wanted to clarify that.
Councilmember Vance?
I might also add, I believe those numbers on the alternate stuff, most of which we promised to the citizens, just a comment, that includes contingency as well. So that's another, my math showed about 257,000, almost 258,000 of contingency. So my total, I didn't include the inflation number, because I didn't know what the inflation number was, but my number, including inflation, or not including the inflation number, was
We're not apt to...
That's a contingency number.
No.
So my number, not including the contingency, would be, I mean, the inflation, do my math here, because I didn't know about the inflation number, runs to 30.8 roughly.
Yeah, math is correct.
Deputy Mirval Rowan?
Let me show another version of the math in a different way. In June, we went back to what the citizens voted for in the conceptual design program activities. We were over budget by a couple million dollars. So in July, we penciled out, sharpened our pencil, and said $30 million. We then came back in September, and again, we were over to $34 million. We were going to move a couple of roads off and bill it to something else. And then we come back now, and we're saying 34.5 of the additions. I appreciate the taking and the sharpening the pencils again, but we had done that in June. And why I'm questioning this is because at the last meeting that we had here in September, we heard the YMCA say very clearly that they could build this building with these features for $30 million. It wouldn't look the same as this building. And your opening comment was essentially, this is the same building. So I'm wondering, why didn't you look at the building if that was a comment that had come out? And why are we sharpening the pencils, which were the exercise we had done in June, versus looking at the building?
Well, before the consultants address this, because you're restating the YMCA statements perhaps not accurately, so I want to ask Demarsha. They wouldn't be doing anything different than what we're doing here. They would have to cut back the project. They're not magicians, that they can just simply go out there and just base, come up with different numbers. Marsha, could you please elaborate on that?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes. When I spoke last time, if this was a project that the YMCA was completely onerous of, that we would build a $30 million project. It would look much different than what we have designed.
Exactly.
At this point, we are very comfortable with the design, the base design that's been suggested. So from a perspective of operations, that we think that the base model is a great model. It could be, it could definitely be operationalized by the Y. If we were to be asked to build a $30 million facility, it would look much different than this base design.
Exactly. And to that point, what would you be cutting out for the 30 million? Would it be actual features that are being cited here? Or would you be going after things like the facade of the building, the hallway sizes, the locker rooms?
It would probably encompass much of those things, many of those things. But I think that the design that we've talked about around the $30 million model, that certainly is a facility that the YMCA could operate. And I think that as good partners, there's an understanding between the city, the staff, the Y, that we want to create something that the residents have asked for. So it's kind of hard to say, gosh, if this was all onerous of the, on the Y, that it would look much different than this. It probably would be still that 34.5.
Would you spend, I've heard that the HVAC system, the heating and air conditioning here is sheltered. Is that correct, Marsha, in this building?
In the design that we have here, it's actually taken care of. We've been working on this over the last few months, and we really have been able to adjust many of those internal components. And so some of that fine tuning that Craig and Keith were talking about have been addressed.
And the shelter itself, how much are they putting in for that shelter to cover it?
You know, that part I don't know. I couldn't say.
It's not, you mean, is it enclosed?
Enclosed, and how much is the enclosure?
None of ours are enclosed.
Okay, all right. All right, so I go back again to the earlier, and given the comments, why aren't you looking at hallways, locker rooms, facades to reduce the costs? Given that this is the second sharpening of the pencil.
Well, councilmember, we have been looking at the hallways and some of those elements, but we're trying to achieve a host of balances, meeting the intent of the various design codes, you know, providing a safe and efficient building, something that's cost-effective to operate. But we have reduced space out of the hallways. The Y has been very concerned about the locker room size already, so given the size of the facility, they're experienced with similar-sized facility that they're already operating. So we've tried to maintain the locker room, because that's a key component of the project. So we've really tried to look at those items and provide a cost-effective facade besides.
Because as I went to look this weekend to Mercer Island's community center and called Rainier's, they have very modest locker rooms of eight and a half by 11 lockers, they have standard hallways, the facades are there. They've just finished, Rainier Beach finished theirs for $25,48,500 with aquatic facilities. And so I guess I keep looking at these, it seems to be that you're going for the style, and some of the substance is being lost for it, and that's my concern.
The thing that I think, you know, we always get a little bit crossways is, is that we keep saying $30 million or $34 million. And I visited that facility you mentioned just today. So $25 million, you know, they don't have a parking garage, they've got very minimal, if any, site, very few parking even stalls, and yet it was $25 million. You know, our building is $15 million. Now, of course, you know, nine or 10 million of this 30 million is site. So actually, you know, I think it's coming out, if we were going to do that comparison, I think it would come out fairly competitive.
Well, no, because theirs is finished, and we haven't put the shovel in the ground yet, is the difference.
Thing, I just, I think you can get into apples and oranges unless you really did due diligence and really compared all of those costs. I think what you're seeing here is a pretty effective, you're not seeing the Taj Mahal, which is, I think, one of the things you're concerned about. We're not getting, you know, a facility that is sort of ridiculously expensive in unnecessary ways. We've really worked with the YMCA to really get those spaces to be appropriately sized, bring those volumes down so they're minimally, in terms of heating and cooling. I'd mentioned how we're trying to dual-use just about every space. Boy, we even have a second floor over our lap pool, whereas, you know, those other facilities don't have those sort of things. So I really do think that there's been a cooperative effort to make sure that every dollar spent is spent in a responsible way.
Short answer is that actually, this will be cheaper than the facility that you talk about, that which doesn't have the structure parking, which doesn't have the access road, which doesn't have the storm drainage requirements that, as we're having here. No, it's not, because that's finished. And as this building here shows, when you put the shovel in the ground, it goes excessive, and we're not even putting the shovel in the ground, and we're going over. Well, there's an option that presented. If you think that you have support for your fellow councilmembers, you can shortly ask for that. I would recommend that we pass this to the finance committee to take a look at finer tuning the numbers. Thank you.
Councilmember James?
He's yielded the balance of his time to me.
No, I still would like to make a comment, but Councilmember Curly had his hand up before me.
Thanks, Councilmember James. Hey, Jess, there's a question for you. The city sent out a mailer to everybody. What did the mailer promise?
I got it here.
What did the mailer promise? You have it there? What does it say?
In terms of, it says approximately...
12,700 people voted for this based on this mailer. What did the mailer say?
Sure, approximately 60,000 square foot facility, approximately $30 million.
Approximately $30 million?
Yep. Cost approximately $30 million.
Okay, what else?
Mine says to build a 30 million.
Go ahead, Jess.
Would you like to me to specify the components?
Yeah, did it promise two gyms, two pools, two laps? Does it promise all that stuff?
Sure.
Okay.
It promises a leisure pool.
Leisure pool.
Lap pool.
Lap pool.
The lap pool, at council's request, was specified, was six lanes.
Six lanes, that's a big deal. Yeah, what else?
Family spa, which is a fancy name of a jacuzzi, a full-size, full-size gym, a smaller gym.
Two gyms.
Correct.
One and a half, one and a half.
One and a half, for 30 million bucks. So they voted yes for two pools, six lanes, two gyms, or gym and a half, a spa, all the other stuff. And now we're coming back to them saying, oh, you know what? You're not getting any of that stuff. You're getting the smaller pool, you're not getting the lap thing, you're not getting this or that. They voted yes to spend 30 million to get that, and now we're coming along and saying, you know what? You're not going to get that, even though you voted yes. I wonder if we put this back up for a vote, and you told people you don't get six lanes to swim, and you get one lane, and it's heated at 86 degrees, enjoy that. And you don't get two gyms, you get one gym and a half a gym, and everything starts to change on this sort of stuff. Maybe people would think differently about it, and that would be a concern for the voters that voted yes, or the voters that voted no. That's all. I mean, we can go back and forth and argue about the drapes and the color of the carpeting, everything else. We've got to get back to what we promised. You promised $30 million and a whole bunch of stuff, and now we're not giving them, right? This is like, if you like your plan, you can keep it, period. This is not the same case right here. And this is why people get upset about politicians and politics and all this other stuff. Because you promised one thing, I don't know why we based it on $30 million, and then we come back to them, now we're starting to change all this stuff. Do you see where somebody might be frustrated with this?
I'm really not sure how to respond, Councilmember Curly.
I'm not, I'm just asking, do you see where somebody might be upset about this?
Hey, John, I think that question can just stand by itself.
Got it, okay.
And I'm going to ask Councilmember James.
I'm finished speaking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This question's for Marsha. I had the privilege to visit the Newcastle Y, and just to compare the two, how big is the Newcastle Y?
The Newcastle Y is just under 50,000 square feet.
Okay. Because the plan that's proposed, if we were to shrink it down, looked an awful lot like the Newcastle Y that I visited. And my comment to the council was, as I was on the fence for this whole thing, and if the majority of the people based on the brochure that went out wanted to build what we were proposing, I'd go along with it, even though it wasn't what I thought would be the best idea at the time. And the people did come back, they did vote for a majority, and now, and then I said that I'm voting tonight, the night that we took the vote, and I just wanted everyone to be clear that I'm voting for a Y on steroids. And right now, we're proposing just to build a regular Y. And I think, under Councilmember Curly's point, is, you know, it's prudent to look at costs, but I think inflation has something to do with this. We're not talking about the 70 million-plus facility that we were talking about before. We're not even going to be able to build this thing for how many more years?
Science starting next year.
Well, when do we open the door and cut the ribbon?
Summer, late fall, I should say, of 2015.
Yeah, so how many years after the vote?
This is about three.
Yeah, so cost of inflation would probably be the differential between the 30 million and the 34 million that we're talking about here today. And thanks to the Y, they're basically paying for our cost overruns if we go with the original plan.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy, and then...
Has anybody not spoken?
I don't think... Councilmember Vance spoke.
He asked a question.
Well, I asked a question, too.
Okay, well, you're up.
Oh, are we having council discussion? Is that what this is?
Well, this is questions at this point.
Oh, no, I want...
Okay. Any further questions?
I do.
Okay, I have some, too.
Just to go back to a point that Councilmember Witten made last time, I was, I just was reading a nice article in the, one of our local papers, that suggests our, I guess it's going to come out in tomorrow's paper, our financial situation continues to look really, really good. This is based on the report that we got on the fourth, I believe it was. Much of that increase is from not only our mitigation fees, sorry, John, but also the real estate excise tax, both of which have components that include parks and recreation. So not only are we in such great financial shape that we have a carryover of, or at least projected carryover next year of, what, something like $60 million? Some of that carryover is, ought to be dedicated Parks and Recreation Funds, and I'm guessing it's a lot more than the difference between 31 million and 34 million. Would that be accurate?
Yes, the, by council ordinance, that the half of the real estate excise tax goes to parks, and the other half goes to the transportation fund. But I think your point is well-taken, Councilmember Vance, that we have ending fund balances significantly higher, which we enjoy it, we love it, it's great. Part of the reason it's better is that because the economy is doing better. When the economy is doing better, your construction cost also goes up. You have already experienced that at the 244th Avenue construction project opening that we had.
Okay, Councilmember Jared?
I just wanted to clarify, the flyer Mr. Curly was talking about says 60,000 square foot facility.
Okay.
We're now talking about 68,844 square feet, so maybe 13 percent larger, and with, for a price of 34,300. I don't, I wouldn't skinny it down. I'd go with the full, what we promised, the citizens, and more, another 8,000 or 9,000 square feet.
For the additional cost?
For the additional cost.
You promised them 30, it's 34 million, they vote yes for 34 million.
That was an advisory vote.
Okay.
More than what we promised them.
Oh, that was an advisory vote, okay.
Okay. I'd like to get back to questions rather than debate at the moment.
Oh, no, I'm waiting for debate.
We're building a community center which will last us hopefully 25-plus years, hopefully a lot longer than that. The revised plan, the option with the combined pool and the single gym, how expandable is that in the future? Because we're sizing locker rooms down, the pool footprint's completely changed. We've been told that changing pool designs, once they're done, is very expensive, and that kind of thing. So if we went with the skinny-down option, and 10 years later, we discover we've made a mistake, what are the implications of that, both from the standpoint of cost and also feasibility?
There are certain spaces that are still, you still have the opportunity to expand with this revised plan. You would still be able to add a gymnasium space. You would still be able to take advantage of, you know, maybe expanding that track or something if you did that. The key thing that you would be potentially limiting yourself with is that core you mentioned. The core meaning the locker room area, that piece that is in the center of the building, you know, those would be appropriately sized for the size of the aquatic one to minimize the expenditure. Those would be very difficult to expand. There's ways that we could, you know, provide some core and shell space to get there potentially, but the pool volume, the shell itself, is the most limiting thing. That's the most difficult thing to expand. So in many, in many aspects, you're right. The decision that you move forward with will really be around the aquatics piece. That's sort of the most critical aspect for your consideration.
Thank you. Continuing on with some questions here. We've talked about inflation. What is the assumption you're using for inflation? What's the inflation rate?
I think it's 1 and 1/4 percent per quarter.
Per quarter. Actually, a couple. The mezzanine, we talked about the fitness mezzanine, gives us another 1,600 square feet, plus a couple. What would you use it for?
In that space, what we would use it for would be for some small group classes, so it'd be a, you know, an area where it would be open, essentially, and you would want to do some... do some small group training there, you could do some stretching, you could do a variety of small group classes there. You would probably do some of our boot camp, you'd use that, utilize that space for, for classes like that.
Is there any possibility, by working things around differently, that could wind up being general-purpose community space?
That would be a really awkward space for community use, because it's going to be on the track, it's going to be, you're going to be right in the middle of a lot of activity above the gymnasium, so it wouldn't be ideal for community use space. And the way that, that we're really looking at this whole facility is it's, it's all community use space, but we could see more ideal locations for community gatherings.
Where I was going with it, Marcia, really was, I think you misunderstood me, if you took stuff that maybe in the northern half of the top floor and put it down there, could you use some free-deaf space for community purposes, just by looking at the layout differently?
I suppose that you could do that, but where you'd end up, what you'd end up reducing in that, and I'm having a hard time because I'm not an architect, but that you would take away a portion of that fitness space, and you'd, you could kind of expand the lobby, I guess if you would, but that, it still would be kind of awkward, because in that space would be directly adjacent to the cardio strength area, and that might not work for the purposes that, that you're suggesting. I mean, anything's possible, but I think that, you know, it would, I don't see how that works in this scenario.
Okay, I'm used to configuring aircraft interiors and we push stuff around all the time, but.
Maybe Craig can answer that question better, but I'm not seeing a good alternative.
Greg, do you want to try, tack the letter?
I mean, what you could do is you could potentially, you know, maybe you could put a studio space there, and then right at the bottom of the stair, configure that into a community sort of gathering or meeting area, and do some swapping like that. I'd have to look at it more, but I think what you're getting at is, is what is the usefulness of that? What added value might there be with that space? And could that expand, you know, to some more broader, broader goals for the project? I'm maybe putting words in your mouth, but I'm just trying to understand where you're going.
You're getting my drift here, so, okay. In terms of the pool size, getting back to that issue again, we're going from looking to competitive pool piece of it, such as it was.
Not competitive.
Well, going for the lap pool, pardon me. We're going from six down to three. And what's the delta water temperature between the two of them?
It would go from a low eighties temperature to a high eighties temperature.
Okay.
And that's generally up to the operator.
All right. Okay, I don't know if there are any questions. Council have any more questions?
I do.
Okay.
Going back to my original question, you never quite finished it. Comparing the two pool areas, the reduced one and the other one, first of all, am I correct in saying, if we just eliminated the lap, six-lane lap pool, that, or that component costs about five million dollars?
I don't know, Keith, do you have a number for the?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Vance, I thought you were going to ask about.
How much is the pool? How much is this value of that piece?
Well, can we go on? I mean, I.
I don't have the number right here at my hands, so the lap pool was valued at, it appears to be about a million dollars. And I can't tell you offhand what we valued the reduced size pool at.
Okay, so, in terms of square footage now, the original one was for fifty-eight hundred for the leisure pool, no, fifty-three hundred? I'm missing my notes here.
The leisure pool is.
And the lap was, fifty-three hundred was the lap and fifty-eight hundred was the leisure.
Correct.
And when you go and you take, and the new one is sixty-seven hundred for the leisure lap pool, the combined one, of that, about is half of it, roughly three thousand square feet, three lanes, lap lanes?
Approximately.
So you're really reducing all of the other recreational areas dramatically.
That's correct.
That's my question, thank you.
Councilmember Vance?
Getting back to the pool again, or staying on the pool, the combined pool would be obviously a warmer pool. My experience is that those kinds of pools are not very attractive to lap swimmers. I'm wondering, and this is maybe for Marcia, I don't know that I've ever been into a Y that didn't have a significant lap pool, is that true?
There are models that, that have one tank that, that can accommodate. I would say that this design is, is certainly not ideal. I think that it, it will create some pressure points for people that want to lap swim and have classes, and it's certainly not ideal for the temperature, you know, it would be warmer and lap swimmers would be complaining.
Just as a statement and not a rhetorical comment, I, you'd lose my wife as a lap swimmer, she'd be going back to Bellevue because of the heat sensitivity, but I would suspect that if you built that pool as opposed to an end, a lap pool, you would lose a lot of people who would just not come to the Y. They'd go to Bellevue, they'd go to Issaquah, they'd go to Redmond.
I would agree with you.
Okay, overall, further discussion?
Council discussion?
Council discussion.
Nancy, you have something?
No. I guess I could support, the one I cannot support out of there, I consider them to be three options. The reduced pool size, which is at just over thirty million, or the thirty-five, full schmear with a, almost thirty-five million. I'm not in favor of nitpicking and eliminating the amenities of the large gym and the water slide and the lap and so on. So that one's off the table for me, but I could support either of the other two, and, you know, frankly, what would my preference be? Probably the thirty-five million dollar option.
Thirty-four, three.
Well, just under thirty-five, okay. Plus the credit for the sales tax.
Did you just take it?
Okay. You know, when I mentioned before, this is a one-shot deal, it's a dream, I think we should go with it. Yes, it's over, and it's going to be predictable, sometimes you are going to be over. We were in a very unusual economic decline. It was, some people called it more than a recession, they called it a depression, it was huge. Costs went down, costs have now gone back up, revenues have gone back up. Not that we should spend the revenues, but we can fund the five million dollar over, from thirty to five, thirty-five. We can fund it without taking away from other programs of the city for other competing needs that the city, or desires that the city has, because our revenues have almost gone up by fifteen million, as I recall. Because of that really fantastic financial situation, I would be in favor of the thirty-five million dollar option, or thirty-four, whatever. But I could also go for the one with the reduced pool size, but I don't want to cut out all the other amenities like the gym and the lap pool. I just think they're too much of a part of what the community wants that meets different groups, and I think we need that broader appeal.
Mr. Mayor, could we have a maybe council motion on the table, and, because we need to get a direction from.
We've just opened discussions.
You can have a discussion when the motion is.
Well, let's have discussion first.
Let's have discussion first, and then we'll get to the motion. Deputy Mayor O.
Again, if we look at what was originally proposed and sent to everybody's homes, this came to everybody's doorstep, we then offered in that thirty million dollars. We came back after sharpening our pencil, the city newsletter again comes back on budget, on time, because it was a very contentious advisory vote, which if you ask our two new candidates, will tell you it's the first question they were asked when they go doorbelling. So this was no ordinary advisory vote that we were doing. I find it fiscally irresponsible to say that because our financial situation is better, we should throw another five million at this without looking at other cuts. Additionally, remember, from what we are looking at this building that we're sitting in, when this is finished, if we go this path, we could easily be over forty-five million. So, we have not put that shovel in the ground. If this was the end and a couple million dollars over, I wouldn't have this problem, but I'm scared at looking at this number before we ever even start. I had said previously, if this had been the private sector, in which it should be, this team would have been fired, where I worked, in any of the software companies or any consulting companies. And I would still strongly urge that we rearrange the management of this and put the Y in charge so that we can have some of those cuts to the facades, the hallways, and other parts of this building. On Eastside Fire and Rescue, for four hundred thousand a year in equity, we set up a technical advisory board, we've had years of discussions coming out, and here at the sixty percent, we're looking at five million dollars, and some of us are shrugging our shoulders and knowing there's more that's coming. Thank you.
Councilmember Jared?
First of all, let's get it back to four million three hundred thousand over for a design which is eight thousand eight hundred and forty-four square feet over also. I'm totally in favor of going, going to that design, the way we promised the citizens in the advisory vote. And I feel that, keep in mind that that's including the ten percent contingency. So, yes, we, in all likelihood, will use a fraction of that, possibly even the whole contingency, I hope not, but, but there is a possibility that we can get it down to less than the four point three million over.
Councilmember Vance?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Jared. We promised, can I borrow your piece of paper here? We promised this, we've had a tremendous economic situation that has driven up costs of, of, of construction, but we have more than enough money to cover it, more than enough money that is dedicated to parks and recreation capital building that, that will cover this. With the, with, no, I don't need that one. You know, as Councilmember Jared suggested, if you take out the contingencies, we're at thirty-one, three. Again, I hope we don't use any of the contingencies. We've had many projects over the past few years where contingencies were never, were never used. I would point out, too, that we have a growing community here. This, if we start scaling down this, this project, ten years from now, it could be wholly inadequate. What I'm looking at, we just had the Lake Washington School District come in here and, and tell us about rebuilding some of their schools, building some new schools in Sammish that will accommodate a huge rise in, in young people in our, in our community. We know we're getting more seniors that are staying in their homes. This is, this is a facility for the future, not just now. And if we just look at now, we just look at a, I think a relatively, in the scheme of things, modest difference in, in price, one point six million, well, one point three million, one point four million dollars of the actual estimate minus contingencies, I think this is well worth our building for the future of our city. We're going to have fifty thousand people, before we know it, we could have a lot more than that, and we surely will have a lot more than that in the future. So, I'm for building the, can I borrow it again? The community center we promised.
Councilmember James, followed by Councilmember Curly.
I have to respectfully disagree with Councilmember Valderrama. I don't think this was a contentious issue in the last election, considering three of the four seats were uncontested. The two candidates who ran for my seat, who apparently I was just keeping it warm for Kathy Huckabee, who will be joining us in January, were both pro-community and aquatic center. They didn't disagree, as far as I could tell, talking to both of them. And I think they agreed to it as envisioned by the revised proposal, not the seventy million dollar proposal, the thirty million dollar proposal, which has a three million dollar contingency built in, I believe, to that cost. So, you know, this could end up being a thirty-four million dollar facility, this could end up being a thirty-one and however less sales tax Don Jaren, Councilmember, has proposed. But I think ever since I moved to Sammish, which wasn't even Sammish in nineteen ninety-five, to the day I decided to run for city council and served on a Parks and Recreational Advisory Board, this city's been wishing for something more than what it has. If all we want is another Pine Lake Fitness, then I shouldn't give up my membership, and maybe I won't. But the reality is, is that this isn't what I envisioned, it's what the people asked for, and if we start quibbling about a few dollars now, then I think there will be a contested election the next time around.
Mr. Curly?
I've always been opposed to this, because it's not a community center, it's a health club. You can call it a community center, but we've already proven of the sixty-seven thousand square feet, I think only you've put fourteen hundred square feet aside that's free. The rest is paid for by people that are members of the Y, which the Y does a great job, I have no problem with the Y. But you start to compete against the private sector, and the nice thing is, as Mr. Vance has pointed out, if the place grows and the demand is there, the great thing is, the private sector will come in and create another health club of the seven that are already here, in order to pick up the people that want to work out and enjoy health clubs. It's not a community center, as Mr. Vance, or as John James pointed out, it's a, it's a Y on steroids. It's far beyond what we promised as far as money's concerned, and it's just one more example of how easy it is for other people to spend other people's money.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. We would appreciate it if the audience would refrain from demonstrations like that. It's not what our procedures allow, thank you. I think we need to go back a long way here, and I'm going to go back even further than Mr. James just did. I moved here in nineteen eighty-nine with two young children, nothing to do, except hang out at Safeway, get into trouble, go boondocking, get into trouble there. Fortunately, my kids didn't get into trouble, but there are a lot that do. We pride ourselves on being among America's friendliest places and a great place to live, a great place to live, to raise families, and that kind of thing. We are consistently rated very high in that. We are growing. When I moved here in nineteen eighty-nine, I think there were twelve thousand people on this whole plateau, including parts that are not currently Sammish. When we incorporated fourteen years ago, we were what?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four thousand. The Office of Financial Management of the State just came up with an estimate that will be four, we are forty-eight thousand right now. We will be sixty thousand within ten years. That's just innate internal growth, not including any annexations. If we annex people, we'll be probably closer to eighty, and annexations will continue. Four years ago, five years ago, when I was doorbelling, the subject I heard most people talk about was the need for something like we're talking about here. Granted, people had different ideas of what that something was, but when you boil it all down, they wanted a community center with an aquatic feature, and the word aquatic was mentioned as much as community center was. So, dial for, fast forward to, what was it, a couple of years ago, and we all sat in this room with Barker, Rinker's help, and we had members of the community put together their concept for what a community center should be. There were three criteria they could look at. One was the features, one, second one was the capital cost, and the third one was the operating cost. the operating cost. Well, for better or worse, most people spent most of the time looking at the features. And that gave rise to the seventy million dollar, seventy thousand-plus square foot building that we all gagged over because we couldn't stand the cost. Nonetheless, I take that as a real indication that people want something like we're talking about here in concept, and they don't want it skidding down. They want the full meal deal, as far as I know. The worst mistake we could make is to undersize this thing from the get-go, because you know what would happen then, folks? We'd be into building another one or paying much more to expand the first one than it would be if we designed it right from the start. For that reason, I'm going to, well, before I do, I asked, very deliberately asked about the inflation assumption, and I got the answer, one to quarter percent per core. Well, a little bit of fast math says that works out to about two point four-four percent annually compounded. That's higher than we're experiencing, frankly, right now. My social security went up one point seven percent next year, and that's based on the CPIW. So the, I don't think we're going to be seeing the kind of inflation where we've been looking at. There is some disagreement amongst members of the council and members of staff over what the true inflation rate is for steel and concrete, which
I have those prices here.
Thank you, I'm talking, what the inflation rate is for steel and concrete. If they stay low, we won't be worrying about using the contingency. If they come in at one-plus percent, we'll still be okay. Frankly, I am in favor of going ahead with this thing, at least from the standpoint of looking at taking this thing to full design and costing. One other thing, everyone wants to cut out the lap pool. They figure that's, well, that's the loss leader, and that's the thing we could probably do without. I want to remind you that there are three high schools within a mile of here, and they all have recreational programs and athletic programs that could well benefit from the pool. Now granted, there's going to be a come-to-God session on who gets what time between the Y programming and the community needs and what the school's desires are. But when we had the push for the vote on this thing, guess who came out to help us work this thing, and that was the aquatic, the aquatic side of the city. And frankly, I cannot let them down. So I will be voting to support the full meal deal here.
Okay, a motion.
That's the end of the discussion.
I move that we adopt the alternative with the sales tax and contingency that amounts at sixty percent design estimate, thirty-four million, five hundred, four thousand, four hundred dollars, less the sales tax.
Credit.
Well, let's just say that this one and that gives us a fudge factor.
I'll second that.
Well, I was going to second, but that's okay, you can second. So it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the
Project total with all alternatives.
Project as originally contemplated with the thirty-four million, five hundred, four thousand and change price tag. Is there any further discussion to this issue? I would just point out that Don wrote a motion for me to give, but Nancy got there first, and it was almost exactly the same word. Excellent, okay. Okay, I'm going to, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So we have, by my ear, five yays and two nays. The motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, council, thank you, team. Appreciate the good work you guys are doing, and that team includes also YMCA. I want to thank you guys, too, throughout this process.
Okay. And I would also like to thank our consultants for putting the pencil to the paper on this for us. And the Y as well. We are now at the point in our meeting where we open it up for public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. There is a three-minute limit per person, or five minutes, if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. And Melanie, we do have a sign-up tonight, thank you.
There you go. Limited sign-up.
It's nice to only have one sheet for change. The first person who signed up is Father Kevin Dugan.
Good evening, Mayor Dell, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Given your busy agenda, I won't take a lot of time. I have a letter here that has been sent by myself, pastor at Mary Queen of Peace Church, to apprise the city of our desire to obtain from you a thirty-day extension of the temporary use permit that was issued back in mid-October to allow Tent City Four to stay at Mary Queen of Peace. They've been there now for just a month, thirty days, halfway through the current sixty-day temporary use permit, but we're requesting a thirty-day extension that would allow them to stay through the Christmas and New Year's holidays into around mid-January, January seventeenth, eighteenth, I think, is the more precise time. This letter sort of spells out the details of our request and summarizes our experience thus far of having Tent City with us and of working in cooperation with the city government and surrounding neighborhoods, organizations, schools on the Sammamish Plateau. Thus far, at least in our experience, it's been a very positive one, absent of any serious problems, mostly it's been just communication matters. So the letter spells it out in more detail, but just here to both thank you for the cooperation from the city that we've received thus far and to apprise you of our desire to obtain the thirty-day extension. The letter was sent to Cameron Girl, the city development director, and we'll be working with his office as kind of we move forward with our efforts to obtain the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Dave Augustin. And if I, I forgot to say it, but again, the usual request, please give your, please give your full name and address for the record.
My name's Dave Augustin. I live at seven twenty-three, two-twelfth Avenue Southeast. I am here to speak on a couple of issues. The first, I will speak briefly as one of your constituents and also as one of your firefighters. As you know, we have been here at every public meeting over the last several weeks with hundreds of citizens, talking about the importance of providing high-quality fire and life safety services and to voice our real concerns over your plan to leave Eastside Fire and Rescue. Great progress has been made with the EFOR Board's adoption of the new funding model last week. That benefits Sammamish. But you have made it clear last week that you still plan to leave if you don't get your new list of governance demands. The resolution passed by the city council last week was a mixed bag of good news and bad, and sends a real confusing message to me and my fellow citizens. We hope you will see that despite the "my way" or "high way" wording of that resolution, that other partners are still trying to work things out with you on the issues that have been laid out because they see real value in having you as a partner. We are hopeful that there will be enough goodwill and progress made over the next few weeks that you will finally commit to Eastside Fire and Rescue for the long term, which is exactly what your citizens want. If you don't get everything you want, we urge you to bring a final decision on whether or not to leave Eastside Fire back to the council for a vote. Your constituents deserve to know exactly how each and every one of you will vote on this important issue, especially since you have heard from so many about it. The resolution you pass authorizes steps to leave Eastside Fire and Rescue without further action of the council. I was encouraged to hear some of you make the commitment last week that you might bring it back to the council. That's the commitment you should keep if your list of demands are not met. Sammamish residents deserve transparency and accountability from their city council, and that's what I encourage you to provide to them, should it be necessary. A choice to bring, a choice to not bring it back to the council for a vote would only be viewed by the citizens of Sammamish as a vote taken by each and every one of you to leave the partnership. If I could have two more minutes, I'm representing the Wolfpack Boosters Club.
Dave, you have three minutes, period.
Is it gone off? Twenty-two more seconds, okay? I'd like to make, as president of the Eastlake Wolfpack Boosters Club, I'd like to invite everybody out to the football game Saturday at three o'clock, and don't forget to buy a hot dog because it pays for school participation fees. Can I have twenty more seconds?
Go for it, go for it, but we'll cut off the mic.
What's that?
Go, 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 go.
So the, so my, the other issue I wanted to talk about, and I apologize, I'm coming late to the dance, is the whole aquatic center. I voted for the aquatic center. I think it would be real beneficial to the city. I wasn't voting for a gym. I go to Gold's. This is, that's one thing that this city needs, is a real aquatic center. We have gyms, we have basketball courts. Jesse has done magic with the Lake Washington School District and Isqwa School District over sharing the facilities with the baseball field and football field. I think he could do the same thing with the big gyms. Sharpening pencils.
How many more about these hot dogs? Michael Liu.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, city council. My name is Michael Liu. I live at two-two-six-three-two, Southeast Fourteenth Place. I represent, I am the secretary of the Redford Ranch Homeowners Association, and I'm here representing that homeowners association and the residents. I'm here to ask the city council, as you go forward in considering not only this extension for the Tent City that is there now, but going forward in evaluating and the regulations that you will take for the permitting process, to take a look at the Mercer Island regulations governing temporary encampments. One note that I will point out in the Mercer Island regulations is that the city should not grant a permit for a campsite within one-half mile of any lot or lots that hosted it within the last eighteen months. We are asking that the Redford Ranch residents that are most impacted by the Tent City behind Mary Queen of Peace are asking that the city of Sammamish share in the burden and the responsibility of hosting a temporary encampment. I will use a very specific example. We are not talking about home values, we're not talking about crime statistics, we are talking about perception. For any homeowner that wants to sell or rent their houses during the period of time that Tent City is there, certainly having that encampment there impacts their ability to rent or sell their home for a fair value as they perceive it, okay? So as a homeowners association and on behalf of the residents of the community that is most impacted right next door to it, we are not taking a stand for or against Tent City or encampments. We have residents who are for Tent City at this location, some are against. What we are asking is that the city of Sammamish, the entire city of Sammamish, share in that burden, and so we urge you to consider the Mercer Island regulations as you consider guiding regulations to govern city permitting of temporary encampments. I have a presentation and the copy of the Mercer Island regulations here, ten copies here for the city council members. And we'd like to thank Mary Queen of Peace and Cameron Girl, we've worked very closely with in making changes to the current configure, or the first original configuration of the Tent City to accommodate placement of the kitchen, backing up against our residents. We think the city has done a great job, and Mary Queen of Peace, in working with us.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have CJ Kaler.
Good evening, Mayor Dell, esteemed members of our city council, and of course, our fine city manager, Yazizi. My name is CJ Kaler, I live at two-one-nine-one-one, Southeast Twentieth Street in Sammamish. I'm speaking tonight on behalf and at the, on behalf of and at the direction of the Sammamish Rotary Club. First, I want to thank the city of Sammamish for partnering with our club this past year in the nightmare of Beaver Lake. We had a tremendous turnout, over thirteen thousand people, a record for us, and we're looking forward to spending the money that we made from this event, all of it, to make the community and the world a better place to live and work. More specifically, though, I'm here to officially advise you of our club's full and complete support for Tent City Four as it resides in our city, and to let you know that we support the extension of its current, of its current sixty-day temporary use permit for an additional thirty years, thirty years, to initial thirty
Whoa!
Initial thirty days. You want to really go for additional thirty?
One mile and a half.
Thirty days to go, January eighteenth of two thousand and fourteen. The problem is, according to United Way of King County, we just don't have enough low-income housing for these people. King County is estimated to have about eighty-seven hundred people a night on the streets, of which there are six thousand emergency shelters with either a bed mat or some sort of device to sleep on for a short period of time. At least twenty-seven hundred people on the streets in King County every night. If we look at the King County one-night count that was done in January twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, they say there was two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six people on the street. That's pretty close to the twenty-seven hundred estimate. And this count in two thousand and thirteen was five and a half percent about what it was in two thousand and twelve, so it's going in the wrong direction. To give my perspective on this, people on the streets that are homeless have two different types of settings they can live in. One is unsheltered, and one is sheltered. In the unsheltered, they have the option of sleeping in a campground, under a bench or wherever, with no protection, with no security, and just go out and sleep wherever they want to. Not very safe. In, in, in the year we just passed, there were forty-two people that were found dead either because of the exposure to the temperature or because of violence. The other option they have to just going out and living wherever they want to in a, under a bridge or under wherever, is something like Tent City Four, where they have security, and they, and when they have, a number of these people, I understand seventy percent of them have jobs when they go off to work, they have a place where their stuff is safe, so when they come back, it's still there. So those are the two, unsheltered. Then we have the shelters, and they've been around for a little while. I talked about the emergency shelters that they have where they can stay up to probably twelve hours, but then they got to move in and out, and I don't know what they do with all their things during the day. Second one is the transitional housing that they have available. It's up to a two-years maximum that they can stay in that, or they try to become self-dependent. And the third one is the permanent, long-term housing that they get when they get to the end of this development, and they're in indoor-supported housing. The Sammamish Rotary has financially supported multiple projects to address the problem of homelessness over the past years, including the Friends of Youth Landing that's in Redmond, the Eastside Winter Shelter, which is in Bellevue, the Kith Transitional Housing Group, which is in Kirkland, the Isqwa Nightly Meals Program. We encourage our city to support Tent City Four for a total of ninety-day visit. The residents of Tent City are trying to respond to this difficult time in their lives, and we think we owe it to them to support them during this difficult period. Thanks for listening to my comments, and thanks for all the hard work you do on behalf of our city.
Thank you, CJ. Next person is Sarah, looks like Morenapew. Did I get that right?
So I'm Sarah Morelidge, I live at two-four-two-two-zero, Northeast Thirtieth Place in Sammamish, and I actually put my name on the list before I knew which way the vote was going to go on the community center, but now I'm here, I'm going to say it anyway. So both of my daughters swam on the Eastlake High School swim team. They've spent the last four years schlepping backwards and forwards to Redmond to get pool time there. When the Redmond pool closed down, they had to get up at half-past four in the morning and beg time over at the Kalahani Pool, and they did it every day of the week for the whole autumn trimester. And I know that you're trying to please everyone with the community center that you're looking at, but I want to remind you that the whole thing of this started with the need for a swimming pool, so please don't skimp on the swimming pool when you're trying to come in within budget and all the rest of it. I think in terms of the overall cost of the project, another five million dollars in the situation we're in at the moment, we can afford to do, so please don't cut corners and throw the baby out with the bathwater. While I'm up here, I want to speak also in favor of the extension of the permit to the Tent City staying here. At a time when we're all talking about how thankful we are for everything in our lives, we've got a lot to be very thankful for here, and I think we could afford to be generous and extend hospitality to people who are less well-off than we are. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the end of the people who signed up to speak. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council? Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. This was going to be under my City Manager's report, but it may be the time and then be more efficient to have this discussion right now. I'm going to urge the council to consider this extension request. The permit is going to expire just before Christmas, December 17. It's in the freezing cold conditions. As suggested by the previous speakers, we need to extend this permit, but I don't have an administrative authority to do so. I need to bring in an ordinance for your consideration to make that happen. And we only have two council meetings left, one in December 3rd and then the other one on the 2nd, so two regular council meetings. So, would council be kind to have a little discussion and give me direction on this?
Ramiro, then Nancy.
Well, Vantone first.
Okay. Tom?
Should I make a motion to get the discussion started?
Bring appropriate ordinance for council's consideration.
Yeah, I would move that we ask staff to bring us the inappropriate ordinance for an extension.
Second.
Nancy?
Is this quasi-judicial? I mean, we've had lots and lots of people talking to us about this. I, you know, if it had been foreseeable, and it is quasi-judicial where we can't talk to people.
Oops.
Oops. I mean, I don't, this-
Senator Witten, I'm happy to address your question.
Okay.
I don't believe it is quasi-judicial. We view it as procedural.
This one, okay.
Yes.
Good.
So, the comments that you've heard have not affected that process at all.
Okay, anybody else? John?
Well, there were two councilmember.
This was for the motion.
Oh, okay. What is the Mercer Island provision that we heard about?
I think it's, Cameron, I think it's a 90 days, and don't they have the 90 days in their ordinance?
They do, and they have another aspect that Mr. Lou brought up, that he briefly described, which in effect requires that Tent City would move around in location-
Not the duration of the Tent City in the Mercer Island-
90 days for Mercer Island.
Could we also amend our ordinance so that this doesn't come back? Because based on the response so far from the city, there may be other community or church or other religious institutions in our city that might want to host us in the future, rather than it having to come back to the council for an emergency 30-day extension, maybe look at doing a 90-day with the Mercer Island provision. I think the Mercer Island provision, have they hosted Tent City, by the way?
They have, I think multiple times.
I just wanted to check if it was an exclusionary.
They have.
And so, if we're doing something, let's do it for the long term with also building, putting in maybe some provisions for the, you know, benefit of our citizens as well.
We can build that in.
Mr. Curley?
Father Kevin's not here anymore, is he?
No, I guess he stepped out.
Nobody can hear you.
Yeah. Tent City knows, the people that organize Tent City know that they have, what do they have, 90 days, or what they have?
They have 60 right now.
They have 60. I'm assuming that they knew that this deadline was coming up and that they were soliciting a new location, correct?
I believe they are always soliciting a new location, so they have-
Do they have another location set up?
I don't know. I'll have to ask them whether they have established one yet, but they'd like to have at least one move ahead at any given time.
Right, they're good at this. They know how to move this thing around, just wondering if they haven't already gotten that place set up.
I'll check with them.
Yeah, that's all.
Nancy?
I really, really don't like being asked at the last minute to do something. I think we should do it here, but I think it makes terrible precedent and bad law, and it's just not the thing to do. If you could have foreseen this, it should have come to us a week or two ago. And, I mean, I heard it mentioned a month ago when Father Kevin came, and I assumed you had the authority to make the extension because it was brought up that it was for 60 days. So, I don't, this last-minute stuff, I think we need to have a good, well-thought-out, comprehensive ordinance dealing with Tent Cities that will have to come back to us next year. I think if they need something on an emergency basis, and I don't know how we do it and not have bad precedent and bad law. So, an extension in this case, yes, an emergency ordinance, I would support it, but I want to make sure it has a sunset clause of maybe January 18th, 2013.
2014.
2014, excuse me, yeah. It's just not good law to try and have something with no time to think about it and to vet it with the public and all those other things. I do think it needs to be done here, but I really don't like the position we're put in to do that.
I apologize as the City Manager here that we could have done a better staff work on this one, but if, I'm not looking for excuse here, we, our calendar was packed with the fire service issues for the last two, three meetings, and this just basically came recently. And then, not only this Tent City item was pushed back and many other items on our calendar, councilmember with them, we pushed back, we really got a little bit late on that one, but I extend my apologies.
Deputy Mayor Valdron.
Yeah, I'm also supportive of this extension in this particular case. I do agree with councilmembers James and Witten that we should revisit the ordinance for this type of program specifically. And I think the Mercer Island provision makes sense, but I'd like to get some input from staff on that after they've looked at the experience from there, because first of all, you need a volunteer church to come forward, and I don't know if we can space them out and get the volunteering every mile and a half or not, so I'd like to get his input. But as far as this going forward, I've only heard of good things from citizens who have been there and serving, and actually, our turn is coming up for serving some meals there as well, but I've only heard good comments to date, so I'm supportive of this.
Councilmember James.
I have a question. We're talking a difference of Councilmember Witten saying an emergency ordinance, and my inclination to make this a permanent ordinance. Do we have the ability, without going through the Planning Commission, to make this a permanent ordinance?
What we've been working on, and we've been working with the city attorney, is to use a provision in state law that allows for interim zoning regulations, kind of like the moratoria that you have adopted for various purposes, it's under the same section of law. I think it's a really good fit for this case, and the ordinance that I've started to work on, anticipating the council would give us this direction, has a provision in it that would direct staff to work on a set of permanent regulations as well. And those regulations would go through the standard Planning Commission process. So, the interim zoning regulation would take care of the authority for this particular extension. It would then sunset on its own because state law only allows those rules to be around for six months. And then, we would work on the permanent regulations as a course of normal business. And if you want to, we know Mercer Island is one of the jurisdictions we'd look at. We'd look at some of our other peers to try to-
Isiqua, Bellevue, there's some good examples out there.
This is a two-parter. I want to defend our staff a little bit. There was a little bit of hostility a minute ago. This letter is dated November 15th. I don't know if you have the sight of foreseeing the future, but I'm sure that Father Duke, Father Dugan had to go to his parishioners and ask them if they wanted to extend for another 30 days too. So, I don't think this is a one-sided, the city springing this on us. I think that they were working under the guidelines of 60 days. They're asking for a 30-day extension. We all knew they wanted 90 initially, so I don't see this as being a surprise.
Mr. Chair.
Just briefly, I would support the 30-day extension interim ordinance, and philosophically, I think I'm opposed to sunset clauses now after seeing how it works.
Inside joke, folks.
Can we include the 18-month provision in one version of that?
Well, no. Let's not complicate life here. The, let's go through my mind is when Mary Queen of Peace first approached us for a 60-day thing, we could see it coming that they wanted to go the full 90, if not longer. Working in their favors, the fact that it's pretty rough on people to pack up and move right before a major holiday, at least for some members of this community, it's a major holiday. I guess I would be supportive. And the human in me says, yes, let's do it. The homeowner in me, which is also human frankly, is concerned about having the kind of impact on property issues that the gentleman from Redford Ranch raised. And we've also frankly had, when this was first announced, a whole bundle of letters that came in from many of our citizens, not exactly happy about it. In the end, it appears to be working out okay. At least I haven't heard anything really negative about it. And I did ask. So, I would be in favor of a one-time extension to get us through this, but I also want to have a very quick turnaround on a look at doing something along the lines of Mercer Island. I don't know if Mercer Island is the right answer or not. I didn't even read it. I also would like to look around, do a 360 around to see what other people are doing about this.
Yep.
Let's not jump to conclusions here too quickly, folks, but let's be human beings and let these people stay here through Christmas. Okay, all in favor of, Nancy, would you restate your motion?
It wasn't a motion, it's just a direction to staff to come back with something?
It was a motion.
Well, no.
I made a motion.
Okay, well, let it be, Councilmember Vance's motion.
Okay, I thought it was Nancy. Tom, what was your motion?
Motion to have staff come back with a, an ordinance for a 60-day extension.
Was it seconded?
No, a 30-day extension.
30 days, it was seconded. All in favor-
On an emergency basis.
On an emergency basis. All in favor the motion is stated, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? 7-0, we have a 30-day extension.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Okay. Moving on with our agenda.
8:15, we're doing good, but we got a lot more to cover.
We do, yeah. I'd like to go through the next couple of items, at least.
Consent agenda? I hope so.
And then take a little break here.
We pass the consent agenda, just get something?
Expect the opposition.
Yeah, let's pass the consent agenda.
Motion to pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, consent agenda is approved.
Forgot the discussion.
We'll get away. Okay, we're now into public hearings. This is Agenda Item Number Four, Ordinance First Hearing, 2013 Docket, Amending the City's Samamish Complain, Chapter Five, Transportation Level. For those following along in the packet, this is Item Number Four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a staff report on this one. The two department directors are the Community Development Director and the Public Works Director to give you a report on this. This is an item that the Planning Commission worked for quite some time. This was a goal that the council put on my work plan to get it done this year. So, without taking too much time, I know that you had brief report on this from the Chair of the Planning Commissioners when he came over here to present their report. I'm going to turn it over to our Community Development Director and the Public Works Director for a quick staff report.
Thank you, Ben. Very quickly, I'll remind the council that every year, the city has the opportunity to amend our comprehensive plan, consistent with state law. You adopted a docket resolution late last year that had four items on it. One was Kinder Race, which you took action on near the beginning of the year. Two was the Southeast, Town Center Southeast Quadrant List, which you asked to be evaluated in the Economic Development Plan. And then, the two other items, and then actions on the Southeast Quadrant List would be considered in 2014 and 15. The last two items were transportation level of service, and then the other item is this net density pilot program. Laura Philpott, our Public Works Director, will go through the level of service set of slides, I think, looking for, to make sure the council fully understands the recommendation made by the Planning Commission. And so, good time now to ask questions for that. Then I'll ask Robin Prosting, our Associate Planner, to walk through a handful of slides on the net density, and then you can open your public hearing. So, in a sense, you're taking Items Four and Five in the public hearings combined because that's what state law asks us to do, is to consider them together.
Together?
Yeah. You have to take action in conjunction, so opening the public hearing, having the public comments together, I think makes perfect sense.
So, we have to take Items Four and Five together, you're saying?
Right, and we've done that before when items have been separately listed on agenda, but we give the combined staff report, you open the public hearing once.
I would separate them.
I don't see why they're connected, frankly.
Well, they both amend the city's comprehensive plan. They do vastly different things, but state law requires in amending your comprehensive plan that you consider the implications of each on each other. In this particular case, there really aren't very many implications, but that's a requirement of state law, that you take essentially action in conjunction. So, we're trying to make sure that we honor both the letter and the spirit of the law by scheduling the public hearing at the same night. We're offering to provide staff reports on this, and you consider that input together as a part of your action. So, you'll take action on these essentially tonight and the next, and the next meeting.
Cameron's trying to be helpful to us for efficiently moving the process. I think that's what she's trying to do there.
Agreed with?
Sure.
It's faster. Okay, let's roll.
All right, Laura.
Yeah, I think it doesn't mean that you have to approve both. You can still make a decision to approve one and then not approve the other. It's just trying to get through the public hearing process.
We're first reading.
First reading.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and thank you, Cameron, for the introduction. As Cameron explained, we're starting with one of the docket items, which is the transportation level of service. Back in late 2012, the City Council gave direction for us to revise the transportation level of service in our comprehensive plan in such a way that two of our concurrency projects, Eastlake-Samamish Parkway Phase Two and Eastlake-Samamish Parkway Phase Three, would no longer be required under our policies. We were also tasked with reviewing with the Planning Commission the projects triggered by Town Center growth. So, I just want to do, I'm going to try to do this quickly, but I also want to make sure everybody's on the same page as far as how our level of service works in our comprehensive plan, because it's not really, it's, I want to make sure we understand, because if we're changing the policies, we want to make sure everybody's on the same page. So, level of service in Samamish is measured in two ways. One is intersection, which is the conventional level of service congestion relief. We say it's A, B, C, or D, depending on the seconds of delay per vehicle at that intersection, and we do look at that. So, that's your PM peak, that's your AM peak, where you're, you know, how much delay are you having at the intersection? But we also look at corridor level of service. And this is where, when Samamish Incorporated, there was a lot of areas that were just rural, one lane in each direction with no urban amenities whatsoever. It was county road standard, the county dollars for transportation were going elsewhere in the county. And so, so Samamish, the Planning Commission and council at the time said, let's have some trigger points at which urban amenities are needed for safety and multimodal. So, in other words, that's where you get the sidewalks and bike lanes and left-turn pockets and medians. And so, we said, at a certain point, when a corridor has a certain number of vehicles per day, it needs to add these amenities. So, we, those are more trigger points. So, this is a map that's in the current comprehensive plan. It shows all of the transportation segments that are measured. I'm going to highlight the top three, one, two, and three. These are all Eastlake-Samamish Parkway Northeast. This is the area of concern we heard from the council. Phase, or Segment Three was already constructed. Segments one and two are currently triggered under our comprehensive plan policies, and that's what we were asked to look at with the Planning Commission. So, let's talk a little bit about Eastlake-Samamish Parkway. So, as I showed you on the map, that there are three segments, they have a varied cross-section. The current traffic volume per day is about 16,000 vehicles. And a project is triggered on those segments when you reach 17,370 or 22,000, depending on which segment you're on. And those triggers are saying, so for example, if you're on Segment Two, let me show you what these look like. what these look like. So there's Segment One, Segment Two, and Segment Three. But for example, on Segment One and Two, once we hit 17,370 vehicles per day, our comprehensive plan says, we need to add urban amenities. We need sidewalks, bike lanes, medians. Um, if we, we also have the ability to average those, those three segments together, and our comprehensive plan tells us which segments we can average. We can average Segments One, Two, and Three, which are East Lake Sammamish Parkway. When you average the trigger point for One, Two, and Three, you end up with 18,900 vehicles per day. So once that corridor carries more than nine, uh, 18,900 vehicles per day, our comprehensive plan says, we must add urban amenities.
Or? Hmm? Or?
We cannot issue concurrency certificates.
Or development stops, our concurrency certificates stop. Sorry, thank you very, thank, thank you for that. Um, so, build out, our tra, transportation model is what we use to determine whether or not we meet concurrency, whether or not development can move forward, is predicting East Lake Sammamish Parkway to carry 22,000 vehicles per day. And that's why Phase Two and Three have been triggered, and that's why they've been listed on our comprehensive plan and our concurrency project list. So the Planning Commission looked at five different alternatives to change the policy. They looked at, do we just change the, you, what, what portion of the policies within the comprehensive plan should we change? And they landed on, um, allowing the adjacent regional East Lake Sammamish Parkway Trail to add capacity benefits. And this isn't in the sense of, we're saying that East Lake Sammamish Parkway will, um, or the trail is going to carry 7,000 vehicles per day. What we're saying is that urban amenity exists by having the trail close to the Parkway. And I think that's some sentiments I've, we've heard from the Council in the past as well. So because that trail exists, there are bike facilities, there are pedestrian, there are multimodal facilities that already exist, and so therefore, we should not be triggering another project on the, on the Parkway itself. And that's where the Planning Commission, um, landed. And that is, um, so just to show you, again, we talked about the current capacity, um, and the needed capacity, and so we have this deficit. We're saying, you know, there's like almost 4,000 vehicles per day. We hit that, we hit that, and we're gonna, um, either have to stop development or build these urban amenities. So the Planning Commission said, well, what would make sense? What number do we assign that urban amenity along the, you know, the trail that's adjacent to the roadway? Well, they said we should, it should be similar to what we currently, uh, the same credit that we currently give to bike lanes. And currently in the comprehensive plan, the policy states that for every foot of bike lane, another 580 cars can be allowed. So if you add a five-foot bike lane, you are allowed.
Let's expand that. What that mean is, if you have a bike lane, and correct me if I'm wrong, my license is a little bit rusty, that actually bike lane is used mostly for other purposes than just the bikers. If it's a lane without the shoulder or bike lane, that you're, if somebody's stopping on that road for one reason, you're stopping the almost entire capacity. So when you arrive to this 580, or the Transportation Policy Board, uh, Highway Administration arrived to that, that's what it is. So the, those garbage haulers, post-mail deliveries, and all the others, or the emergency vehicles and the, you add those things, that's what you get that. Otherwise, you don't push that 580 vehicles through that one-foot lane, so that, I think you need to expand on that one a little bit.
Absolutely, exactly. Ben, that, that was very helpful. So there's lots of benefits of having a, a bike lane facility on a roadway. Um, there's safety benefits, there are real capacity benefits, but, um, I wanna be clear that the difference between, when we're talking about the capacity added, the way it's defined in our corridor, it's not discussing the capacity during the PM peak, it's discussing the, the whole day, 24-hour period capacity of the roadway. So the co, so the Planning Commission is recommending that, the table, which is in your packets, the, um, VJ table in Chapter Five of the Transportation Element of the Comprehensive Plan, revise it in such a way that the trail itself, um, by adding the trail, you can allow more vehicles on the roadway. Um, now, this, vehicles are gonna be there no matter what, but this is, um, saying we don't have to add, it's not triggering a project to add these urban amenities to that roadway. So do we wanna pause and ask questions about the East Lake Sammamish Parkway and the change in the VJ table before we move on to the Town Center portion? Okay. So the, the, the next item was, uh, Town Center, and what were the impacts based on the, the projected growth of Town Center? So there were, um, a few projects that came up, and we ran the model with the Town Center land use added. Southeast Fourth Street, which is probably no surprise, it's in the heart of Town Center, um, and Doody Hill Road, two different segments surrounding the notch, and, and then, uh, a few intersections. So we'll start with the corridors. Here's a map showing you Southeast Fourth Street, 218th to 228th, which is right in the heart of Town Center. And then down on the bottom right-hand corner, right here, you see there's this green section and red section. Those are Doody Hill, and they were, they also, um, had volumes that would trigger improvements in the future after the Town Center growth was added. As you can see, as I think the Planning Commission Chair, Mike Luxenberg, pointed out, that there, it is, um, you know, separated by the section of King County. So Southeast Fourth Street, um, again, here's the Town Center border, and here's the corridor we're talking about. Uh, here's the current street conditions. So a little bit about Southeast Fourth Street, it's currently classified a collector. It current, um, current volumes are less than 2,000 vehicles per day. Under its, the way it's, is right now, the way it looks today, we could put 9,430 vehicles per our comprehensive plan policies and continue to allow development without doing any improvements to it. However, with Town Center, we're anticipating 18,500 vehicles per day. Our comprehensive plan says that no collector in the city can carry more than 17,800 vehicles without being out of compliance with our concurrency or stopping development. However, if it was classified, the same road was classified an arterial, we, it could carry up to 25,000 without triggering, you know, without stopping development.
Laura, I think you might have mentioned it before, but just for clarification, the collector max capacity per table V-J, 17,800 per day?
Mm-hmm.
That came from our comp plan, but is based on, again, what?
Well, there's a, um, a hierarchy of, you know, your road classifications go from local roads to collectors to arterials, and the idea is that you, you wanna develop a system and have, um, based on maximum volumes so that they behave the way that they should. And our, the Federal Highway Administration, um, provides those classification definitions for us. In fact, all of our roads that are classified are also federally classified, which allows us to do grant applications for them.
So this is an FHA number?
Um, I don't know if this particular number is. Perhaps Ben can recall during the original comp plan.
Uh, I'm gonna throw in, another acronym is, is the Associations of Highway Official, the Highway Transportation Officials, ASHTO. I'm trying to, that green book that you guys use, I think that's where it's coming from, these numbers are. It's a standard that they depend on. Is the consultant that, uh, Victor Salomon was helpful that, when we were developing this thing, so we can ask him exactly where it came from, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So, so below that little table also shows you the project that, approximately $20 million, and this is to widen the, the roadway to three lanes, um, either turn lanes or, or median, bike lanes, curb gutter, and sidewalk. And of course, we would be consistent with the, uh, Town Center needs. So the Planning Commission made a recommendation to the Council, and their recommendation was to add Southeast Fourth Street to the projects, the city's project list, to begin collecting street impact fees based on that, that project being added, and then also to reclassify Southeast Fourth Street from a collector to a minor arterial. So did we wanna pause any questions on Southeast Fourth Street?
Nancy?
I keep coming back to the Town Center plan is, there's a proposed pedestrian crossing where the green spine would be, right in the middle of the road, between 218th and 228th. And it would jam up traffic, um, on, in all directions on Southeast Fourth and 228th, if that were the case, and if there were actually active pedestrian use that was stopping traffic. Um, before we add this to our collector list, I'd like somebody on staff to look at that intersection with a pedestrian crossing in the middle of the block, um, and comment on it at least, at minimum.
Oh, we did look at it during the Town Center process, and I think there's some great examples, um, both regionally and nationally, of how that's been designed into the projects to accommodate both the pedestrian needs as well as the vehicular needs. So I, I feel confident as a part of the design of this project, we'd be able to find the right balance and, and meet those needs. And of course, whenever we're, um, designing a roadway project, we do bring those details back for the Council's consideration, you know, along the way. We do check-ins. So there would be lots of opportunities to refine that.
But what I'm saying is, when we have this design plan for Southeast Fourth, to have an element that is just counter to everything experience would suggest, uh, would make it fail, and make 228th fail, uh, I'd like to see, uh, rather than just say it's three line, lanes and, uh, whatever, I'd like to see a comment on that Town Center intersection for pedestrians, uh, and how it would link up to reclassifying the road and the design for this. Should we be including something, um, that would treat it as a proposed intersection, or should we be eliminating it, or what should we be doing with it?
Uh, from the safety standpoint, I think they got enough tools in their toolbox to address that very important question that you're raising in terms of the pedestrian safety.
Well, it's not just pedestrian safety, it's circulation, Ben. It's the ability of traffic to keep flowing.
I was gonna get to that.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, from the traffic circulation and capacity standpoint, that, we'll have Victor Salaman to run the numbers, um, the, from the traffic model and get back to you on that one.
Okay. So now the Doody Hill Road projects. Um, again, the notch is broken out in the middle. The two sections highlighted are the ones within, uh, City of Sammamish limits. Current conditions, uh, just a couple photos for you. Um, current volumes, um, both segments is, uh, less than 14,000 vehicles per day. Uh, under the current conditions, the road could carry less, a little less than 17,000 vehicles a day without triggering improvements, but our future capacity needs, um, are over in excess of 19,000. So that's where that trigger came in. Uh, the problem is, the, we don't wanna get into a case where we're building something that doesn't have real-world value, and that's where the Planning Commission was really concerned about spending $26 million to, to, uh, raise this capacity to 22,000, um, they were concerned about that, uh, without, um, you know, with that big gap. And so their recommendation was to delay adding this project to our concurrency list until such time that a coordinated project could be developed and programmed. When they say coordinated, coordinated with the adjacent agency, whether that's King County, or if somebody else takes it over, or at some time the whole corridor becomes Sammamish because the notch becomes incorporated at that time. Um, the only thing I would also add is, there's not a risk of go, coming out of, uh, or going into concurrency failure anytime in the near future, because this isn't expected to fail until 2030. So, um, intersection level of service, again, I touched on this earlier, uh, it's based on the Highway Capacity Manual. There were two intersections that, um, that the Planning Commission, uh, looked at outside of an, another project, Southeast Eighth and 228th and Issaquah Pine Lake Road. Uh, there they are on the map. Uh, the, the Planning Commission recommended that any failures that would happen at these intersections, um, because of Town Center, would be addressed using the State Environmental Policy Act, and mitigation specific to that development. And the reason being is, depending on the actual land use patterns, they can, they can vary a bit, depending on, uh, there is some flexibility in the Town Center, and intersection level service is very sensitive to where those, um, access points are made.
And, and it may be that you may not wanna do much of, at this intersection, because the widening that you allow is gonna make things difficult for pedestrians to cross. That's what you did in the Inglewood Hill Road and Northeast 228. Yes, you got a little bit concurrency problem, but you don't wanna, uh, uh, amplify the problem for pedestrian to cross that road by adding more width for the crossing distance. So we'll come back to you on that one, we don't need to address it tonight.
Does not need to be a part of the comprehensive plan modification. Um, so implementation steps for what you just heard, um, there's an, an ordinance before the Council, it's in your, a draft ordinance is in your pack, packet, it includes modifications to Table VJ in the, the Chapter Five of the Comprehensive Plan, which is the transportation element. It also includes language that would reclassify Southeast Fourth Street. Uh, the rest of the Planning Commission recommendations would, uh, if that ordinance is passed by Council, uh, would come back as a modification to the city's street impact fee. Again, that would be at a future date, and that's where we would actually physically remove East Lake Sammamish Parkway and those costs, and add Southeast Fourth Street as a project, and we would recalculate the traffic, the street impact fee at that time. Um, again, we're do, we're talking about the policy side of it tonight, uh, and at the next Council meeting, and then the mechanics would, would come after the comprehensive plan change. So that's all I have, um, for discussion tonight. Oh, next steps is open the public hearing, um, concurrent with the other docket item that is, um, on the agenda for your consideration tonight. Listen to public testimony, and you could either close or continue the public hearing, and then the second reading for this draft ordinance is scheduled for December 3rd. And if there's any additional questions or discussion, I'd be happy to...
Thank you, Laura. Could you go back to the first slide where you showed all the roads?
This one?
That one, you... So what's on here is Southeast Fourth up by Item Number 18, I guess that is. Uh, you're also showing a red line on 218th between Southeast Fourth and Southeast Eighth, and on Southeast Eighth between, uh, 228th and 212th. You did not talk about those, nor did you talk about, uh, 218th north of Southeast Fourth. All of which are kind of key to the whole Town Center plan.
They did not fail under our transportation model that we ran, so there's no recommendation to do anything, um, associated with that at this time. However, the City Council always has the discretion to, um, program transportation projects outside of the concurrency program.
Well, we just recently connected, uh, 218th, and I'm wondering, was the model run assuming that was connected or not?
Yes.
It was?
Yes.
Yeah, you looked at it.
Okay, no more questions for Laura. Mr. Mayor, you wanna open the public hearing and then...
Oh, wait, no, you were gonna do...
Well, other questions from the Council.
Oh, you were gonna do the other one, too.
Mm-hmm. Do you wanna... All right, well, the questions from Council first before we move on to the next one.
None for me.
Okay, let's go on to the next one then, and then we'll open public hearing for both of them. This is, uh, Item Number Five in the packet.
It is.
This is the public hearing, first reading of an ordinance regarding docket proposal to establish a pilot program into which up to five pilot project sites would use gross area for density calculations, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's absolutely accurate, and, uh, this was one of the items added to the docket list by the Council late last year. We have Robin Probsting, who is a, an Associate Planner, uh, with DCD, to give her first presentation to the City Council. I've reassured her that you are all very nice people, and you're gonna ask wonderful questions and make her comfortable up here.
We have sharp teeth and we bark a lot, right? That's what you told her?
Good evening. Um, so I've prepared some background information on the density calculation pilot program. I've been working with the Planning Commission for, um, this year on this proposal. Is it advancing for some reason? There we are, no. Um, so, uh, this docket proposal came from Mr. Kip and was placed on the 2013 docket by the Council. The proposal originally was to create a pilot program in which up to five pilot sites in the R1 zone could use gross area to calculate density rather than the current net area. And through some of the Planning Commission's analysis and discussion, um, the proponent later modified the proposal to include a cap on maximum possible density, either via a, um, maximum density of four units per net buildable acre, or a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. And so I've prepared some, some simple illustrations to show what the implications of this, um, the change would be. So first, I have three slides that show what current code allows, and then followed by three that would, um, show what could happen in the pilot program. So first, here's...
change would be. So first, I have three slides that show what current code allows, and then followed by three that would show what could happen in the pilot program. So first, here's a hypothetical 10-acre site with one acre that would be used for streets, critical areas, or buffers. Net area being gross area minus streets, critical areas, and buffers. So with 10-acre site, less one acre, you would be able to build nine units on five acres. The five acres is there because the R1 zone contains requirements for both clustering and a 50% open space dedication. In a site where five acres were encumbered, you'd be able to build five units on five And then in a highly constrained site, say where only one acre was buildable, you would be able to build one unit on one acre.
Let's pause there for a quick second. I want to make sure that the council understands how this works. This is our current regulations. So on this type of site, the amount of constraint, the critical areas constraint, really has a direct relationship to the number of units that you can build on the site. So when you have very little constraint, as in this first example, only one acre of streets or critical areas and buffers, you'd go 10 acres minus the one acre for nine net acres, times the one unit per net acre equals nine units. And because of the 50% open space, you build it on half the site. Are there any questions about how that works? And then same idea here. If you have more constraints, it cuts down on the number of units that you can build under our current code. That's the effect of the net density code. So the more constraints you have, the fewer units you build.
So could you theoretically build 10 units if each one had a driveway going out to the road around the perimeter?
No, you mean on the first example?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's possible to configure these in different ways. Obviously, other aspects of our zoning code or our street standards would apply, so it's not just one set of, one thing. We're just illustrating how the net density piece works. But yeah, some of these can be configured with individual driveways rather than road. Now, Robin, you ready to go through what?
What would happen under the pilot program? Thank you for clarifying that. So the next three slides show possible scenarios under the pilot program. So instead of using net area to calculate density, this example uses gross area. So if there's 10 acres, you can build 10 units. And given the 50% open space dedication, you can build that on five net acres. So here's 10 units on five acres. In the slightly more constrained site, again, gross area is 10 acres, so yields 10 units. Again, 10 units on five acres. And on a highly constrained site, this shows where that cap of four units per acre kicks in. Ordinarily, under a gross density calculation, on a 10-acre site, you could put 10 units on the one net acre. But because of that cap, you're limited to four units on one net acre. Is that much clear? Any questions? Okay.
I just want to be 100% clear.
Nope.
We start here. Remember on the original example in our current code, nine units on the five acres under current code, same scenario here, 10 units. So not much difference, okay? Second example, half of the site is constrained, so you have five units on the five acres. Under the second example, same amount of constraints, 10 units on five acres. So in that case, it's double the amount of actual yield. Yes, Councilmember?
What's the increase in, what's the impervious surface that you can predict? Maybe the maximum or averages under each of these scenarios?
Well, that, and like the street standards, the R1 zone also contains restrictions on impervious surface, which also apply and would not be altered by this particular pilot program. If memory serves, the lot in the R1 area can only build 30% impervious surface. So that's going to apply, and it would constrain the amount of actual development on any of these lots. Obviously, we're just showing the home in a cartoon fashion there. On a real site, you know, you'd have many constraints that would govern there. But that would continue to apply no matter.
Thank you.
Yeah, as I recall, you mentioned that one of the constraints would be, or the limitation would be in R4 configuration. In other words, they could get four lots on one acre. There was also mention of 7,000 square feet. Does that change anything or?
They're both trying to get to the same issue, which is, instead of, on the very extreme circumstance, like in this illustration here where the site is highly, highly constrained and you really have a small developable area, that instead of having 10 units tightly clustered, perhaps having to be multifamily units on that one acre, there would be a cap. And the way the Planning Commission minority recommended, that cap would be measured in the sort of four units on that acre. So it would be similar to development that you see elsewhere in the city.
But there was an alternate that said 7,000 square foot minimum.
That was really my question.
There are a couple of different ways the commission considered as to how they would get to that, essentially that cap. They played with both 7,000 or 10,000 square foot lot size as one aspect. They also played with the idea of simply measuring a number of units per net acre. Ultimately, the minority recommended this mechanism here. Is everybody clear on how the program works? So I want to remind the council, the Planning Commission majority was to not adopt any pilot program. You have this slightly unusual circumstance where the minority position is actually supported by four planning commissioners that's saying, yes, please do adopt a pilot program. What we're trying to do as staff is to help you wayfind through all of this, since it is a little bit confusing and a little unusual. Robin's got a handful more slides, and then we are open for questions.
Good, thank you. Please continue, Robin.
So the Planning Commission held a total of five meetings on this topic, including a public hearing in July. They considered potential impacts, which, as Chair Luxembourg mentioned, were neighborhood compatibility, environmental quality, and public services. They took public comment via oral testimony and written comment, and some themes that emerged were concerns about neighborhood compatibility between the pilot sites and existing development. There was also the question of the timing and the relationship to the comprehensive plan rewrite, which we are now starting. There's also support for increased property owner flexibility, especially among property owners who are both in the R1 zone and may have properties with environmental constraints. As Cam has mentioned, the result was a three to two vote against recommending creation of a pilot. The two voting minority members, plus two members who were not present for the vote, drafted a minority report and an alternate ordinance. And the ordinance contains the gross density, or the original proposal, plus a few mitigation measures built in. So tonight is the first reading and public hearing on this matter. The second reading is scheduled next month, and there are two possible ordinance before the council. One to carry the Planning Commission's recommendation forward and pass the ordinance to deny the proposal, and one put forward by the voting minority, which is to pass an alternate ordinance that would create a pilot program. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Do we have questions? Councilmember?
Yes, just a brief question that I can't remember the answer to. When they require 50% of it in R1, open space, is that open space, community open space, or is it available for like a community trail, access trail?
Typically, it's, you might have to help me with part of this. It's typically put in a tract that's owned by the homeowner's association or the developer, but I'm not sure if the public can access it.
Unless there is a, it is not required to be open to the public, and as Robin said, it's typically in an HOA tract.
But during the planning process, if there's a trail anticipated, it could be negotiated with the developer or what?
That's true, and occasionally those kinds of things happen. And you're familiar, the city has adopted its trails, bikeways, and pathways plans. We have some policies in our comprehensive plan, and we do try to take note of all of those directions, and if there is an opportunity to get a trail connection, staff will pursue that.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Does staff have a recommendation?
I defer to Cameron on that one.
Well, I want to remind that the staff originally suggested that this pilot program idea be included as a part of our 2015 comprehensive plan process. Council chose to put it on the docket instead and have a decision made this year. Given all the work that's gone in before the Planning Commission, I do think it's fair to have an answer or a decision on the pilot program this year rather than wait. Mr. Kip and others, and the neighbors who have opposed the pilot program, have put a lot of time in, and I think everybody would like to see the council make a choice here.
Can I ask a question? How can staff support a pilot program that's project-specific? Isn't that just a way to get an end run around our environmental regulations? To get special spot zoning?
Yeah, I don't think this is either spot zoning or an end run, especially since we spent better part of a year looking at it. The net density was adopted as a citywide ordinance, and it was adopted prior to me getting here, so I don't have as much direct history as perhaps you do, Councilmember Whitton or others, in terms of the origin of it. But we've been faithfully implementing it since it was adopted. And we do have, this isn't the only applicant that has expressed concern about it, because our net density ordinance is a little more restrictive than some of our peer cities. So I think this is the first time where some alternative to this has actually come up. And the council did ask the Planning Commission to look at it as a part of the docket process, so they have faithfully followed that direction by evaluating it.
Okay. Councilmember Vance?
I'm trying to figure out what our choices are in this, just to think about the next meeting. Obviously, we could approve a pilot program. We could deny any pilot programs, but we could also refer to the comprehensive plan.
You could take any one of those actions.
Okay, so there are at least three choices.
That's true.
Councilmember Laura.
That was one of my questions I was going to ask, and also, you have just mentioned, Cameron, that there are other people asking for the pilot program. As I understand, this pilot program would have up to five. Mr. Kip is one. How many others have come forward?
I'd have to check the records to see who else in this particular process. My comment was related more, since I've been here eight and a half years, my comment was that in administering thousands of permits here over eight and a half years, our net density restriction has come up on a regular basis by a variety of applicants. I did not mean to say there's been a clamor for this pilot program this year. There's been relatively small number of people participating in the Planning Commission process. It's simply that this is an ongoing theme for us in administering permits.
Okay, thank you.
John?
I think one of my challenges is the confusion over minority and majority. Even though there might have been a quorum at the meeting the night the vote was cast on this, it might have been better served if the vote had been postponed, and a true reflection of the ordinance that we would be considering for a pilot program was on the table, as opposed to trying to weigh one minority opinion that happened to be the majority on one particular night after they spent a whole year looking at this. So I just want to ask my fellow council members to please keep that in mind as we're reviewing these alternatives.
Mr. Mayor, a small comment on that. The Planning Commission chair recognized the same issue, and it's certainly an awkward thing to transmit under these circumstances. He did ask the Planning Commission, with everybody there in the next meeting, whether they wanted to reconsider their recommendation. And there was only one of the seven that wanted to reconsider. So they simply didn't want to, I think they were done with the issue, they wanted to move on. They sort of recognized they were handing off a bit of an odd duck, so apologize for that, but I think we can keep it straight.
Further comments? Don?
Just quickly, the five pilot projects, how would they be selected? First come, first served, or would you have a lottery or what?
I believe under the minority recommended ordinance, there's a geographic distinction. Is that right? And we may have a map if we wanted to pull one up. They've identified areas of the city, and so only one project in each of the five areas. So that limitation would be there. But like the other pilot program the council adopted through ECA, our best mechanism is a complete application, so that is a first come, first served.
So I have to ask the same kind of question I asked during the ECA regulation regarding pilots. How do we know if the pilot works?
Well, that's kind of the purpose of a pilot program. You do your best to anticipate the likely effects of it and build in mitigations, and then you implement the pilot program and you measure the results. If you look at the minority recommended ordinance, they do have a monitoring and evaluation section that they've recommended the council consider if you do adopt a pilot program that would require our staff to monitor the effects and then generate a report back to the City Council.
Nancy?
Is there any best available science supporting this?
No, I don't think there's a relationship to that that I've been, I would.
The, my understanding of R1 zoning is that it has to be to protect, there has to be a special reason. For example, a separator between urban areas or protection of an environmental resource that's significant. So you're saying increase the density is going to have a potential impact on the resource. We don't know whether it will or not, and there's no best available science showing that we should, as a precursor to something broader, have some science underlying the proposed pilot that's really proposed for specific parcels. I mean, this just really.
Perhaps, I'd like to speak to that briefly. I do think the Planning Commission had some of the same questions as you did. Here's how I would put it, a response. The commission evaluated both environmental effects and neighborhood compatibility effects, and they tried, as they went through the process to perfect a recommended ordinance, they built in some protections to deal with that issue. Part of the reason for the geographic dispersal relates to both neighborhood compatibility and not having too many, let's say, all five projects in the same neighborhood, so you could get kind of a super cluster in that regard. So they were trying to take into account your concerns. Because the pilot project is by definition a pilot, it's small in scale, and with the cap on the very highly constrained sites, having no more than four units in the net acre there, the commission, and this was based on staff commentary, I think, felt comfortable that the environmental effects would be handled through our existing code provisions. I'd also make a statement that the R1 zone is there for, those two reasons that you mentioned are accurate. The large-scale environmental areas, which is probably the primary reason, and then also this idea of urban separators. There's a third reason, too, and the third reason is that the historical lot pattern was at that one acre density. And people who have been living up here on the plateau much longer than I've been working here will know that development on the plateau goes back to the 1970s, and some of those lot patterns were in the very low density.
But they also had a reason, not just historical lot pattern. I mean, the R4 was designated because of the septic system situation. You needed a third or a fourth of an acre for septic. The R1 was always because of environmental or something like protect Lake Semamish. I mean, it wasn't just an abstract.
No, I don't think it's abstract at all. I think it's very specific reasons. Last time I looked, about 24% of the city has got that R1 zone, so it's a pretty substantial area. And when I look at our map, I see mostly large-scale environmental constraints as being the primary thing that overlaps with that zone. Those environmental regulations are going to apply irrespective, and if you look at a map, you have both R1 and other zones in those areas, and the same environmental regulations are going to apply. Again, it's a matter of choice for the council as to whether you go for the pilot program or not. You have the three options that Councilmember Vance articulated. The commission did look at all the same issues, and that's why they made the recommendation.
Well, you know, also, there have been some suggestions that we should be looking at the R1 zone to tighten it up and to make it even more protective of the environment by making sure that the open space is near required, you know, near the sensitive sites that it's protecting and things like that.
There is, and I'll just maybe offer a comment on the idea of looking at the R1 zone in the comprehensive. at the R1 zone in the comprehensive plan. It's a much bigger deal if we either decide to look at net density in a larger sense in the comp plan. That will have much larger implications and it's certainly way beyond the scale of a pilot program. So the pilot was designed to be small in scale and small in effect, very deliberately. If we look at this in a broad sense, that will be a major topic in the, in the comprehensive plan. So forewarned on that, on that idea. And we will need the council's direction as to ideas that you want to consider for the R1 zone, whether it's a lessening of, of, of the net density requirements as the pilot program was proposed, or perhaps I think I heard maybe more of a tightening of those requirements as Councilmember Whitten has described. We're not asking for that direction here tonight. That will come as a part of either your meeting in December or probably more likely next year as a part of your visioning process. Right now, the only thing that's on the table is the pilot program, as you've asked to be put on the table through your docket resolution.
Our fault.
Okay.
So I think it's time for the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
I think it is, yeah. So at this point, I'm going to open this up to public comment on both issues. The comprehensive plan, chapter five, transportation element, and also on the net density calculation issue. So I do have a number of people that have signed up this evening. Again, as in the other public comment, same rules apply. Please come to the podium, identify yourself by name and street address and city. And if, we'll give you three minutes unless you are representing a recognized Sammamish community organization. The first person I have is Rick Aramburu.
Members of the council, I'm Richard Aramburu. My office address is 720 Third Avenue, Suite 2000 in Seattle. And I'm here tonight representing the Broadmoor Homeowners Association. Broadmoor is a established residential community at the very far north end of the city, just off 244th, just west of 244th. I'm here tonight to speak against the density calculation pilot program as poor policy and poor law and ask that you deny the, that application. I provided other letters to the council, which I hope you will have an opportunity to read before a decision is made here. Several points to be made. First of all, this isn't a comprehensive plan matter at all. This doesn't have to do with general matters throughout the city. At best, it has to do with maybe one or two individual pieces of property. It's not a comprehensive plan amendment. Secondly, there's kind of a phantom proponent here. Mr. Kip has been testifying about this. But I asked him tonight, I said, well, Mr. Kip, who's this property owner? Who is this person or persons that wants this spatial treatment? And he refused to tell me who that person was. And I gather it's only a single individual. Well, at least when we were doing the pilot programs in the ECA, we knew who everybody was and what they wanted to do and where they wanted to do it. It's a program that involves some spatial treatment for spatial property owners and shouldn't be approved. The standards that are found in this ordinance are both incredibly vague and put undue burdens on your staff. To begin with, apparently, the staff will be asked to choose as amongst applicants as to which ones will be treated as a pilot program. It talks about preferred applicants. So there's a matter of discretion here, which is really very much inappropriate to be applied citywide. There's, there's discussion of monitoring criteria and meaningful data, but what kind of monitoring criteria will there be? Mr. Grayl is, is a busy man. Now, he's been, just been given another job all during the time that the comprehensive plan has been, is to be adopted. What sense does that make during a busy time? The, the meaningful data that we're talking about is going to come from a development which may be applied for in the next two or three months, but probably won't be even through the planning process for perhaps a year and won't be built for another year after that. And this is long after the council is going to be considering the comprehensive plan, which is the whole reason that presumably we're doing this, is to make these decisions as a part of a comprehensive plan process. So just to summarize, the council should deny the application, should defer this matter to be considered where it should be considered during the R1 review of the comprehensive plan. And thank you. If you have some questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Rick. I have no questions at this time. Joe McCarron?
My name's Joe McCarron. I'm at 24107 Northeast 29th Street, Sammamish. First time in front of the council, so please be kind to me too. I'm the president of the Broadmoor Estates Homeowners Association. I support everything that Mr. Aramburu just said, opposing the density calculation pilot. I just had a couple of extra points. Broadmoor Estates does support growth. Where we're located, we're in R1 neighborhood. There's a couple of empty areas that surround us. East of us is R1, it's empty. And south of us is R1 and it's empty. The south part would actually connect to Broadmoor Estates. So we have a lot of concerns of the coherency of this potentially going to R4, connecting to our neighborhood that's R1. So if a builder came to us, which we've had builders come to us, but if they came to us and proposed, we want to connect your neighborhood, we want to continue R1, we're all for it. What we don't want to see is all of a sudden you go from R1 and then immediately go into R4. The other thing too, that gets in a little bit of the weeds is, we also have some safety issues based on this. If you're putting more houses in an area, where our road is, we already have traffic issues, which I'm in communication with King County about, safety issues. We've had several accidents right outside of our neighborhood. So if you take that area and say, okay, we're going to, net effect, four times the houses, you put more risk on the streets and the traffic and the people in the neighborhoods. So to wrap up, please deny this proposal and take a look at it, the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bear- Beruther?
No.
He left, okay. Or Greg Kip, or Greg Kip, brother?
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Greg Kip. Address 3011, 211th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. I'm speaking to the R1 density issue. And really, this is an issue of fairness for R1 property owners. Currently, R1 property owners, for any development that occurs on their land, first must set aside 50% of the property for open space, permanent open space. Secondly, as staff indicated, all critical areas in the requirements for streets and roads must be deducted from the gross acreage before one starts to calculate the amount of allowable density on that acreage. No other zone properties in the city of Sammamish or anywhere in King County have what I refer to as this double whammy or this double takings, where first you set aside 50% of the land and then you deduct all the critical areas and streets before you begin to determine what the level of density is on the properties. I think the staff examples of the scenarios that were provided this evening provide some good indication of that, if you will, unfairness. Let's take a ten acre site, as the staff did. Five of it needs to be set aside for permanent open space. Leaves you five acres on which you develop. If you have one area, one acre out of the 10 acres in critical areas and the streets, you're allowed to develop nine lots on the five acres. If you end up with five acres of encumbered land, you're only allowed five acres, five units, on the same five acres, where otherwise you would have had nine units. You lose almost 50% of your property value due to those two regulations. One of the things that I think is important to note, and staff alluded to it, is that all other environmental regulations and development regulations would apply to any development that would occur under this pilot project. All of your ECA regulations, all of your stormwater regulations, shoreline regulations, if that was applicable, pre-retention, traffic requirements, et cetera, circulation. The city of Sammamish has just gone through the process of updating its critical areas ordinance and its shoreline master program. You have some of the most up-to-date, best available science regulations on the books anywhere in this county. Those are designed to protect the critical areas. If by chance, someone could not get the net density under the proposed pilot project because of these other regulations, they wouldn't get it. Those regulations would trump any density calculation. So with that, I request consideration by the council and approval of the pilot project, which was recommended by the majority of the Planning Commission. And it is a pilot project for five pilots throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Macy?
For sake of expediency, because of the hour, I'd just like to say I support the position of Mr. Aramburu and Joe Kip.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it. Andrew Morley, Marley Duck, or?
I'll be expedient, Marley. Hi, Andrew Morley, 24220 Northeast 30th and Sammamish. Just two points, really. The first one is, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and, and the fact that it's a, it's an open hearing is a fantastic principle you have in this country. The, the issue that we have with this is that you, we kind of denied that principle because we have to chase around various meetings like this. We're not quite sure when it's going to come along. And, but a pilot program, seductively named, really means that there's an opportunity for certain areas to be developed that don't, where there isn't the opportunity for any of the public discussion. And we strongly believe it belongs in your comprehensive plan, where you can decide with public input what you should be doing, rather than what has accurately, I think, been described as a sort of end-around. The second thing is that I understand that some of you are lucky enough to be moving into retirement from the council. And I would think this would be something that would be better served by being decided by the incoming council rather than the outgoing one. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mark, should I just go home now?
No.
If you wish. Mark Comer.
Good evening, Mayor O'Dell, members of the council. My name's Mark Comer. I live at 1628 204th Ave, Northeast. And I'd like to speak to the chapter five, transportation element. I like to keep things kind of straight and to the point, so I'll say two things right off the bat. A disclaimer, I have nothing against the aquatic center bicyclists. Okay? That's the disclaimer.
Points taken.
And, and then I'll get right to the ask. And the ask is that you decide not to enact this, this draft ordinance. I read through it and I live just off of East Lake Sammamish Parkway, just north of Inglewood Road. And I see traffic there every day. I drive East Lake Sammamish in either direction, every day, going to work and coming home. And there are a couple of things that, that strike me about traffic. One, as you develop the town center, there are going to be more people coming here. That's more traffic. As I heard earlier in the evening, you're projecting demographic population growth. We're at 48,000, 50, 60, 80,000 is conceivable. If I were to hazard a guess, those people are probably not coming here on bicycles. They're probably coming here in motorized vehicles and they're going to be on those roads. And the other observation is, nobody's moving 520 or I-90 anytime soon. And so people who live on the plateau are going to continue to pour off the plateau, heading to someplace else, and at the end of the day, reverse it and repeat it day after day after day. When I try to get onto East Lake Sammamish Parkway in the morning, if I catch it wrong, I'll sit there for a couple of minutes as I wait for the traffic that has the green light coming down the hill off of Inglewood. And as soon as they hit a red light, the traffic coming northbound on East Lake Sammamish, you know, picks up, fills in the gap, and we play a little bit of chicken trying to get in there. If I were to hazard another guess, it's the bicyclists probably have more square feet of asphalt dedicated to them along East Lake Sammamish Parkway than motorized vehicles do. Between bicycle shoulders on both sides of the road and the trail, that millions of dollars are being spent to pay, pave. And I don't know if Sammamish contributes to that or if that's all a King County project, but I think I totaled up something like $15 million that's being spent to pave a trail. Well and good, perhaps if we could move all the bicyc, bicyclists off to that trail, then we would free up enough of the bicycle lanes on the road to create another full lane. Because there actually is that much asphalt dedicated to the bicycle lanes along East Lake Sammamish running northbound. So again, my ask is that you do not enact this because relying on the regional trail to do those calculations is going to do absolutely nothing to, to solve the traffic growth issue that's going to continue on that road as the city experiences growth. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends the list of those that have signed up in advance for public comment on the, the two hearings. Is there anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close-
Public hearing.
Public hearing on both these issues and continue it to the next session.
Continue what?
Well-
The hearing?
Pardon me, pardon me. No, I'm not going to continue it. No, there will be a second reading of the ordinance when-
Mr. Mayor, I know the, the transportation issue is going to come up, but I, you know, I heard at least from one councilmember deferring the net density ordinance to comprehensive plan. So the question from the, from me to the council is that, do you want me to schedule the second reading of the ordinance for the next available council meeting? Or does the council want to postpone that, table that issue or the second reading for indefinitely?
Which one?
Net density ordinance.
Can I have an answer?
I'd like to table it. I'd like to, I want to bring up the R1 zone in the comprehensive plan context. And personally, and this is, I mean, I don't know how the others feel. Part of that could be net density or it might not be, but I, I do think we need to look at the R1 in the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Jurd?
I'd like us to take it up at the next meeting so that the outgoing councilmembers can feel that their input is-
They're earning their salary.
Quite gracious. I concur. Anybody else? Three. Well, the chair would like to table it.
We need a fourth.
I would like to schedule it with the idea that we could look at the options of also sending, the three options that we have on the table here.
Okay, and I got the four. I think that we, we schedule it and then you can decide at the next reading. Thank you.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. So five. So.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, you want to, you were thinking about taking a break?
I was thinking about taking a break, however, we still have a number of things ahead of us here.
Short break. And may I suggest something for your consideration, Mayor, council? We have quite a few guests here from our school district here and a good friend of mine superintendent is here, some elected board members here. I was wondering after break that maybe we take that issue first.
Ah.
And then, then we follow with the rest of the agenda, if that's okay with you.
Well, I was going to go one further. I was going to take item 10 next and then do the break.
Before the break?
Mm-hmm.
I think there's a biological break need for people here.
Their legs being crossed under the.
Anyone who wants to find a tree real quick? Okay. With the forbearance of our friends from the Issaquah School District.
Back to nature.
We'll take a ten-minute break and be back, well, not quite ten-minute break. Be back in here at nine-thirty. It's been pointed out that considering the hour, we probably need to ask for a motion to extend beyond our normal ten o'clock cutoff time, which is hardly ever observed.
Can we do it maybe ten-thirty, Mr. Mayor? We can maybe go through the rest of titles quickly, so, and then if you need extended, we extend it one more time.
All right. Is there a motion to do just that? Move.
Second.
The move and seconded to extend the meeting to ten-thirty with an option beyond that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
By a vote, that was five to one, the motion passes. Councilmember Vance will be rejoining us in a few minutes. So I would like to jump out of order here and go move to new business, and come back to item number six, seven, eight, and nine, subsequent to taking care of number ten. Number ten is a resolution to support each of the three Issaquah School District levies. Collectively, the one is the levy. These are for three different levies. One for renewal of the maintenance and operations levy for funding educational programs and operations. The second is a school bus levy to fund new and replacement school buses for the district. And the third is a capital projects levy to fund education, technology, critical repair, school remodeling, and that sort of thing for safety and efficiency. So, Mr. City Manager, I know we have some guests here. Would you care to introduce some, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to make it short, my part. I'm going to immediately go to our esteemed superintendent, Ron Thiele. He is also our city resident. So maybe Ron can give us a report on this, and perhaps introduce your board members and the others here with you, Ron.
I will. Thank you, Ben. And thank you for allowing us this time tonight to come in. I did say to Ben during the break, now that I live in the city, it's a lot more interesting to attend your meetings and kind of see what's going on. One of our directors is here, Suzanne Weaver, and she's actually here in the capacity for Volunteers for Issaquah Schools tonight. Those are the folks that run our campaign organizations. And our co-chair, Leslie Austin, also a former board member of the Issaquah School District, is here tonight as well. And I am going to be brief. Hopefully, you all got the materials that we sent in advance. We wanted to make sure you had everything that our community had, and that the committee that put the package together used as we move forward. And as was stated, we have three renewal levies. Those will be on the Tuesday, February eleventh, 2014 ballot. And these are renewing the MNO and the capital levy. Those are expiring four-year levies. And the transportation was just a one-year levy, and this would be another one-year levy for the transportation. And so I'm going to let Suzanne talk about the campaign, and then I'm available for any questions that you might have as well.
Thank you very much. And just in an effort to be scrupulously legal, I will be the one who respectfully requests that you endorse these three levies. I think it's very clear that they are critical for the functioning of the district, the quality of the district that our students and the residents of the city of Samamish expect. And of course, as we all know, a strong school district results in higher property values and generally happy citizenry. I did want to let you know real quickly that if you want more information on the campaign, you can find us at visvote.org. And you're also welcome to individually endorse the campaign and the levies. And if you happen to be a Facebook person, we are also on Facebook at Volunteers for Issaquah Schools. You're welcome to like us. And we have some lovely parting gifts, little car magnets that we do for every campaign. Wanted to be sure everyone got one. And with that, I will defer to questions.
With that report, Mr. Mayor, staff recommendations, approval of the resolution for the support of the old eleven measures.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Do we have questions from the council for either one of our guests?
I think they're excited to have somebody make a motion to that effect.
Go ahead.
I so move.
Second.
The move and seconded to approve the three Issaquah School District levies as written. Do we have any further discussion on it? Councilmember Gerard?
Just wondering, what does the state match on the school buses? The school bus revenue levy?
Yeah, there is a depreciation cycle. It's actually a twelve-year cycle, but I don't know the exact numbers. But by passing a transportation, a bus levy, which only allows us to purchase the buses, it doesn't provide money for the operating, the drivers, the diesel, the mechanics. But it does allow us to participate in the transportation, the state depreciation cycle, which actually leverages a lot more money for the district. So the levy itself is only 1.7 million, but we'll be able to buy, you know, a lot more buses out of that over time, because we will be participating in that state program. I don't know the exact, I don't know what the exact formula is, but it's a twelve-year depreciation cycle that we participate in.
Thank you. I have a question for you, Ron. You're purchasing seventy-one buses. What's the total fleet size?
That's a great question. The total fleet size, off the top of my head, I can't remember. What I can tell you is, we're the fifteenth-largest school district in the state, but we're the sixth-largest transportation fleet. So we are a much bigger bussing system than we are school system, because we spread out over one hundred and ten square miles. So we're almost identical in size to the Bellevue School District. We're within about two hundred students of each other, but their transportation fleet is significantly smaller than ours. I want to say about a hundred and sixty buses, but I'm kind of guessing on that one right now, Mayor.
The reason I ask is I recall from, I think, three, four, maybe five years ago, there was another bus levy, and I just wondered what the replacement cycle was like. Typically, how long do you keep them?
We, about twelve years. We try to participate in that cycle. One of the things that we like to talk about, too, is it relates to the newer buses. As I mentioned, the levy doesn't pay to operate the buses. That has to come out of our general operating funds, our classroom dollars. And so the newer buses are, one, cleaner burning. We talk a lot about how different it is at our, particularly at our downtown bus facility, when we start those buses up early in the morning, how different it is today than it was fifteen years ago before the low sulfur diesel and all of that. But also, even, we buy thousands and thousands of gallons of diesel every year. If we can get even a gallon per mile better efficiency out of our buses, we save hundreds of thousands of dollars in classroom dollars or operating dollars. So the new buses are not only cleaner burning, more fuel efficient, but they also do have some safety improvements as well. You know, not that the current or the older buses aren't safe, but they continually get better, just like automobiles do. So that fleet is important to us. We have to buy special buses because of the hilly terrain. Our buses have bigger engines, gearing system, and brakes. Our fleet takes quite a pounding in our northwest weather and the topography of our district. But, you know, we're pretty proud of the fact that we get clear safety audit and inspections year after year, and we think we provide a great service. But it is a big bussing system.
Okay. Well, thank you. Further questions? Okay.
I guess if I total your numbers, you're looking at over two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars.
That sounds about right, yes.
Your last capital bond issue was only about that much, as I recall. It was two-twenty-nine.
Yeah, two-nineteen was our bond. Yeah. This, I should tell you that a maintenance and operation levy represents about twenty-one percent or twenty-one cents of every dollar for our district operating. You know, there's been a big discussion about changing the funding model or the funding system for public education in Washington. I think it's important for people to know, that hasn't changed yet. So we do rely heavily on levies. We are currently, by law, able to collect twenty-eight point nine-seven percent. That was, there was a four percent levy lift back during the economic crisis of two thousand and nine. So these levies are really important. We have an all-in operating budget of about a hundred and eighty-three million dollars annually, so that doesn't include our capital budgets. So, yeah, it's a large amount, but it's a lot of money to run the school system.
If you didn't have this quarter of a billion dollars given to you with it covering this four- or five-year period, it'd be disastrous for the district, wouldn't it?
It would be. We cut, during the two thousand and nine biennial budget, we had to cut sixteen million dollars. We had to reduce, we did a rift of teachers, we cut secretary hours, we cut custodial maintenance staff, we raised athletic fees, all for sixteen million. As you can see from some of the documents we provided you, the MNO alone raises between forty-four and fifty-four million dollars a year. We estimate that at, I mean, if you wanted to look at it just in pure numbers of teachers, it's about four-hundred-and-eighty-five teachers out of a staff of less than twelve-hundred. So it would be.
Devastating.
Devastating to the school system.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions?
Further question?
Before we call a question, I need to ask if there are those present who wish to speak in opposition to this?
For support.
Or for support.
By law, we're required to do that, folks, so.
Who knows that?
So seeing none.
You can right behind it.
So seeing none, I'm going to ask someone to make the motion.
I guess I made the original motion?
There is no, you didn't make an original motion, did you?
Yeah. What I recommend is staff recommendations, approval of those three levies accommodated by the resolution in the packet. And the councilmember, James, says so move. And then councilmember Waldarama says second.
Could I make a point of clarification?
Go ahead, John.
As the voters in Samamish who live in the southern half of the city that go to the Issaquah School District, we're going to be encouraging all of them to vote yes on this. For those that might get channel twenty-one that live in Klahani, as you're going down the ballot, you can check yes for Issaquah Schools, but we would like them to consider Samamish. So the only way to do that is to check no for incorporating into Issaquah on the same ballot.
That's right.
Oh, I have a question.
I second that as well. Students, it's just a matter of which flag that flies in front of the school, right?
I have a question. Have you considered renaming yourself the Samamish School District? I'm being funny.
I have not considered that. Maybe others have.
Issaquah is the only city that is entirely consumed by the district. We have bits and pieces of actually six or seven other jurisdictions.
But we're the nicest piece.
Yeah. Well, one thing people may not know is that we have more students from the city of Samamish than any other area.
Well.
And more schools in Samamish.
Done.
That goes the point. Okay. All in favor of the motion as stated, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you. Seven to zero in favor.
Thank you very much, and thanks again for allowing us to come tonight.
Suzanne, if you don't already have it, I endorse this, okay?
I believe we do have you, but thank you. I will make a note of that.
Thank you, council. Next topic is, we're going to do probably all six, seven, eight, nine together. This is not a new topic. It's not a new budget. It's a budget adjustment. We already have a biennial budget. This also was vetted at the Finance Committee extensively. So I'm going to ask our Finance Director to give us a quick staff report. I think the Finance Committee members will recognize what is presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the first reading for the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen mid-biennial update. Same presentation. We're also going to cover the two thousand and fourteen property tax levy. As Mr. ZG said, this is a review of the information we shared on the fifth of this month. And then last week, we also shared it at a much slower pace with the Finance Committee, since we were a bit rushed that night at the council meeting. Again, a mid-biennial update is required by state law. Three intended purposes are for technical adjustments, like updating our revenue estimates and our personnel costs. Also incorporates actions prior that council has made throughout the year, and also to address emerging issues that weren't contemplated when the two-year budget was adopted. The revenue adjustments for the general fund, we're proposing to increase property taxes by two-hundred thousand dollars for a total of twenty-two point three million dollars. Sales tax increasing it by approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars for a total of three point one million dollars. The criminal justice sales tax, that's the shared sales tax that we receive, bringing that up to an even one million dollars. These numbers are all getting us in alignment with two thousand and thirteen amounts that we're seeing coming through. Liquor excise tax, increasing that budget by forty-two thousand dollars for a total of four-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. The criminal justice, population contracted, and specialty programs, this is the one that was in play during, when the state was establishing their budget, so we budgeted zero for this. So that's a total of a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars increase, two thousand and fourteen. And then permitting revenues, that we spoke about, we're increasing our permitting revenues. These are the general fund revenues, building plan check fees, building inspections, site plans, and other permit processing revenues totaling three million dollars. On the CIP side, revenue adjustments include the two-point-four million dollars we're recognizing in two thousand and fourteen YMCA's contribution to the community center funding, hundred thousand dollars in King County Parks levy. This was voted in to extend the levy till two thousand and nineteen. Grant funding to receive from King County for a hundred thousand dollars for parks improvements on the Sahali Overlook property. And then on the park side, an increase in impact fees by four-hundred thousand for a total of seven-hundred thousand in fourteen, as well as an increase in real estate excise tax by six-hundred-and-fifty thousand for a total of one point eight million. On the transportation CIP side, traffic impact fees were increasing them by one point four million dollars, and the corresponding change with the parks CIP and the real estate excise tax by six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Also, development-driven, this is system development charge collections in the surface water management CIP fund. In total, we're increasing our total revenues by seven point seven million dollars for a total in two thousand and fourteen of fifty-eight point three million. On the operating budget side, we have adjustments to our personnel budget. One is the seasonal benefits, a reduction of three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. That's a one-time savings, the enactment of the Affordable Care Act not being implemented until two thousand and fifteen. The medical dental premium benefit, we're reducing our budget by a hundred-and-fifty thousand compared to what we budgeted in two thousand and fourteen. That's the AWC Trust, our insurance provider. They've gone to a self-insured pool, and as part of that, there's zero premium increase for medical, dental, and vision benefits in two thousand and fourteen. The two percent wellness award, this is the one item that's changed since the information I showed you on the fifth. Per council direction, that two percent wellness award, that's what the employees earn to participate in the wellness program. And this shows an increase, because it wasn't assumed that that would go back against the employees' contribution to the medical premiums. First reading, second reading will reflect that it does. And then the COLA adjustment, we assumed two-point-one percent COLA increase when we adopted the two thousand and fourteen budget, and the number is actually one point seven percent. These are changes that will affect all the operating funds that have personnel assigned to them. General fund expenditure side, we spoke about reducing the police services contract budget by two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to align with the contract amount that is going forward in the King County Council. Fire services contract, a slight increase, approximately twelve thousand dollars to that, as well as a two million dollars budgeted for fire startup costs if needed. Five thousand dollars included for the comprehensive plan rewrite, the council visioning piece that council had requested. Halftime FTE position, a code compliance coordinator, this is to allow us to give some assistance to the code compliance officer to keep up with caseloads we've been seeing. Management analyst intern, this is an internship program in the city manager's office. We had one in two thousand and thirteen, did great work. We'd like to continue that in two thousand and fourteen. As well as a facilities maintenance position, this is a nine-month seasonal position. This is a position that's going to take a lot of the facilities maintenance and facilities coordination work off as folks are working in the community center. And then a coordination work off as folks are working in the community center. And then a recreation supervisor, this is a reclassification, one of the three existing positions in the event planning staff. And then stormwater fees, you'll see this hit a couple of different funds. This is our share of the fee increase for city-owned properties. Permitting services, these are all general fund items that we spoke about to keep up with the demand. In the permitting center, we've proposed to add a number of positions. Two of them are FTE positions, one plans examiner, one associate planner, as well as a continuance of a halftime limited-term position, permit technician. The cost, you'll notice, is only $15,000 because we do have $20,000 contract, budgeted and contracted line item for the same purpose. We're also proposing to add $100,000 in temporary planning services. That's a continuation of existing contract, which was approved by the council on the 17th of June, as well as $75,000 placeholder for temporary engineering review services and public works if needed, for a total of $411,000 related to permit processing. This is all fee-supported work. As I mentioned earlier, we're increasing our permitting fees by over $1 million. That offsets the cost of these positions.
It's paid by the fees. The salaries positions are funded by the fees that we collect.
But if you over-collect, they have to, that's wrong.
No, we don't over-collect. We never do over-collect. We basically collect based on the expenses that we're, we're, we're only looking at right now is the, the staff side of the expenditures. We still have the IT expenditures for others, so we're always trying to break even on that.
For the other operating funds, in the street fund, an increase of about $3,000 for the stormwater fees, as I mentioned earlier. Same thing in the storm, surface water management fund, to the tune of $6,000. $100,000 placeholder for temporary professional services in the IT department for help desk work, audio/video broadcasting, and other projects we have, as well as purchase of two traffic control reader boards. We've gone through all we can to try to maintain and refurbish the two that we have. They're running out of parts at the scrap yards. Time to move on. So, a summary of the positions, two and a half full-time equivalent positions, and the ones highlighted in orange are those ones that were tied to the development package I spoke through earlier. The part-time positions, continuation of the half-permit technician position, the management analyst position, and then the nine-month seasonal and recreation supervisor reclass. Capital improvements budget. In the park CIP fund, we are increasing the expenditure side by $5.7 million. Again, the remainder of the project will be budgeted in 2015. There'll be additional budget adjustment for $15.6 million. This reflects $30 million project cost at this point. $100,000 on Ever Creek Preserve and Sahali Overlook Property improvements. This is the King County grant funded, I spoke to earlier. On the transportation side, 14th Street construction, that was approved by the city council on March 25th to move forward with, as well as a 244th non-motorized project budget increase approved on July 15th. That touches both the transportation component, as well as the surface water CIP fund component. And then finally, we're increasing the surface water management CIP fund by $75,000 for improvements to Sahali Overlook property. This was an offset against the purchase price when we closed on the property with King County. In total, our expenditures are being adjusted by $8.6 million for a total of $61 million. Summary of the 2014 adjustments, our ending fund balance, because of the changes in revenue expenditures, goes down by about $900,000. Again, that includes the expenditure adjustment for the community center, as well as the placeholder for fire services contract, for an anticipated ending fund balance of approximately $45 million. The ending fund balance, as it splits out, of that $45 million, approximately $100 million of it is restricted funding. That's funding that's either dedicated through council policy or uses of money restricted on how we can use it. Then there's $35 million of unrestricted funds. Of that $35 million, we will also be budgeting 2015, the $15.6 million for the community center. But please keep in mind, this doesn't reflect any activity that we're seeing in 2013. We anticipate to have at least $7.4 million of unanticipated surplus in '13 that is not included in the '13 or '14 budget.
We will reflect that when we have the final budget numbers consolidated. So, the net result is about close to $14 million increase on the ending fund balance.
This slide here shows, this is the, the summary table, the, the, the balanced budget, and it shows the piece that council actually adopts. When they do adopt the budget ordinance, the Table A that references $170 million, that's the addition of your expenditures and ending fund balance. So, there is no council action required tonight. Second reading will be coming back on December 3rd.
Okay.
2014 property tax levy. Would you like me to proceed? This reflects the fifth year in a row where the city Semamish has foregone the 1 percent allowable levy increase. It will result in a bank capacity, $914,000. Again, these numbers are all tentative until we get the final assessed valuations from King County's assessor's office the end of this month. Calculation, you'll see the 2014 estimated levy rate will be $2.41 per $1,000 of assessed value. The assessed valuation increase goes from $8.4 billion in 2013 to $9.3 billion in 2014. $184 million of that comes from new construction that's included on our tax roll. The levy rate as a result decreases from $2.59 per $1,000 assessed valuation to $2.41 per assessed dollar, per $1,000 assessed valuation. Again, this is first reading tonight. No council action is required, and we'll come back the same night as the budget on December 3rd. So, tonight, we'll go through, we've gone through the, the two first readings, and we'll open up a public hearing for both. We'll come back on the 3rd with second reading of both of them, as well as the three somewhat-related items on resolutions. One of them, 2014 salary schedule, has no structural changes to it. It simply updates the 2013 numbers with COLA for 2014, and it completes the second year of the change, the seasonal hourly rate maximum from $16.50 an hour to $17 an hour. We'll also bring forward the 2014 Employee Medical Insurance Premium Contribution Rate Resolution. This is a resolution we bring forward to the council every year. It reflects a 2 percent well-city awards program savings, and states that the employee's share of the medical premium contribution is 8 percent of the premiums for spouse, domestic partners, and dependents. Finally, the 2014 Fee Schedule Resolution, actually kind of minor changes this year. It's going to be updated for the second part of the two-year change in our surface water management fees. Recall that we increased from, in 2013, we increased 18 percent. 2014 reflects 15 percent, the second of the two-year update, as well as we're going to be adding, where we start charging for electric vehicle charging fees. $1 per hour for the first six hours, $2 an hour after that. The principles of this is, one, try to promote people to use electronic vehicles as their mode of transportation. Two, let's not sit out there and have it parked overnight. Make sure that we're opening up the charging stations as quickly as we can to let everybody have a chance to get their car charged.
You've been sleeping in your car, or what's going on?
I've been running this today.
Not six hours yet?
And council, one of the reasons we're doing that, we have some folks actually, rather than charging it at their home overnight, coming over here, using the charging stations. Not, I'm not talking about here, literally leaving it overnight and then coming back in the morning, picking it up. There's a cost associated with it. We wanted to promote it, and I think the fees we're charging is very nominal fees, so we should be able to do this thing.
Subject to future escalation. Joe, I want to give you congratulations. That last chart you showed there gives new meaning to the term I chart.
Oh, that's just for, that's just for show. It's nothing like you'll ever see from planning or parks or public works.
It's not even related to the subject.
It's not like the fine print? Any questions?
If not, Mr. Mayor, we need to open a public hearing. If there's any comments, we'll take the public hearing, and then what I recommend, you may want to close the public hearing also, because again, this is not a new budget, this is the budget's just.
At this point, I'm going to open the public hearing regarding the 2013-14 budget adjustment, and also, at the same time, open the hearing relating to the levying of regular property taxes and establishing the amount to be levied in 2014. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing.
Mr. Mayor. And we'll bring the second. There's no action needed from council tonight, and let me maybe do item number eight and nine quickly. This is a moratorium extension. We still need to do some homework, and we still need to get some clarity from the state. So, we will be extending the moratorium on the marijuana issue. It is, again, the first reading of the ordinance. No action is required from council tonight. We will come back to you with the second reading on December 3rd.
However, we have a public hearing.
They're leaving.
Yeah, I know. I know. But, so, so you may want to open the public hearing if there is anybody to comment on this thing. I see Lyman is sitting back there desperately waiting for public comment on this thing.
Okay. Lyman is in public comments, man. Okay. At this point, the chair will open the public hearing regarding extending a moratorium on the establishment of collective gardens, defining collective gardens and establishing effective date. At the same time, we'll also open the public hearing simultaneously. First reading is proposing a moratorium on the establishment of certain marijuana-related facilities, defining said certain marijuana-related facilities, entering legislative funding, providing for severability, and establishing effective date. Are the members of the audience who wish to comment on either one of these ordinances? Seeing none, I am going to close public hearing. And we'll have it back in front of the council on December 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. That brings us to the end of the regular agenda items. I don't think we have any unfinished business. Council reports quickly. I'm going to start with Mr. Jaren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, I spent another five hours.
Charging.
Charging. Yeah, looks like it.
He might even make it to Seattle and back.
On the road, you see his charge steering committee, learning how, figuring out how to charge you for driving on the roads. And it's the last meeting, it'll be forwarded to the legislature in January. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Vance.
The, I have RTC tomorrow, the Regional Transit Committee. As you know, they've, they've announced their potential cuts in metro transit for, for starting next fall. There are rumors upon rumors of a transportation package maybe percolating in Olympia, but we'll find out. But I will have that meeting tomorrow, and I'll update on the 3rd. The other issue is the Eastside Fire and Rescue did, the Board of Directors did approve two agenda bills last week, one of which approved unanimously the funding model that we had approved in our own resolution, so that is done. The second part, although I believe at least one city is post-board approval, approving it tonight. I think Issaquah is looking at it tonight. The second agenda bill approved a, an additional ad hoc committee to begin discussions of some of the ILA questions that we had, some of the things that we wanted in the, in the new ILA, or continuing into the new ILA. And as, as we approved last week, our representative is, is council member Jaren, and I believe they will start work Friday.
Friday morning.
If everybody agrees. So, that is continuing as well, and that was also approved by the EFNR Board. Those were the two major issues at the meeting, and those both got done.
Thank you. Councilmember Curly?
Working with Lake Washington School District to try to get the fee charged by the select basketball kids reduced from $9,000 to $6,000 to $3,000, and trying to get it to come down to a reasonable price. I don't know how much they charge for toilet paper, but it seems extravagant, considering the kids are using the gym for four hours. So, that's what I'm working on right now.
You mean, charged by the district for the kids?
So, yeah, Lake Washington School District charges to use East, Eastlake High School gymnasium.
Okay. Interesting. John?
Just two things. First, I attended this morning the agenda meeting with the mayor, deputy mayor, and city manager, and part of my reason for attending is tomorrow at 4:00 PM, we have a Community and Economic Development Committee meeting, the last for the year, and we'll be getting a presentation by Community Attributes about any potential tweaks that was presented on October 8th at the study session that I unfortunately missed. But I did watch all three hours of it via video, and saw that a whole hour was spent on the visioning statement on one word. But, so, that was an interesting event. But we will be talking about trying to see if there's a consensus between myself, council member Vance, who's the chairman of the committee, and council member Witten, as to any proposed tweak or tweaks, based on the presentation by Community Attributes, not to steal any of their thunder tomorrow, and they already mentioned it on the 8th. The most important thing that we could do to spur on anything happening is related to parking, so I imagine there'll be a robust discussion about what parking and at what level, if it was to be reduced in the town center. At the discretion of the mayor and deputy mayor, I did ask that we add to the calendar on October 3rd a
October?
Excuse me, December 3rd, an opportunity to present any recommendations to the full council for, and on the 10th, for consideration of vote regarding any of the subsequent recommendations. So, those will be on the, the calendar, assuming there's no dissension here tonight for future. Also, given that we only have two more council meetings, and I'm kind of in the twilight of my tenure here at City Hall, I attended the last Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting. They did talk about reduction in bus service without some kind of funding. The straight state is looking like they're doing some things to get finally transportation on the table between the, the two sides negotiating. And obviously, we had a lot of activity related to unrelated to Eastside Transportation Partnership Boeing, and it'll be interesting to see whether those jobs stay with the 777X or go to a place like South Carolina, based on the vote that the union folks took recently. But in the four years I served on that committee, unfortunately, we did not solve all the region's problems related to transportation and roads. If the state doesn't come up with some kind of options, I'm afraid our county roads that we all use may turn to gravel. The bridges that we saw collapse over the Skagit River may be more commonplace. And through the wisdom of each and every one of you, and those that serve after I leave on the Eastside Transportation, hopefully we'll come up with some solutions that, that address not only transportation, but roads, and maybe even someday, we'll have light rail to downtown Redmond that our city residents would actually use, and if Fred Butler lives long enough, maybe even light rail down to Issaquah. But that's to be determined. So, I'm hopeful, now that we have a new mayor-elect in Seattle, that the 520 bridge will be extended as six lanes from, not only from Bellevue, but all the way to I-5, which has been a real sticking point for the group for these past four years. So, really don't have anything else to say today. One of my last reports coming up, so Nancy?
Thank you, Joe. Nancy?
No comment. I mean, no report.
Remove.
Yeah, I also attended the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting, just to add on to what council member Vance has already said. It's important to cite that we did present the dates of the schedule that Semamish has proposed for looking at our recommendations to the ILA amendments. It was a little contentious, as the ad hoc committees had reported back for March, and a number of the councils had received direction to support it, but with the March date. So, despite that, it was passed, although one, District 38 abstained because their direction was for March, but supported the process. So, despite that, they all stepped up to our timeline. There was a side-by-side comparison that was given, and I've provided that to the council to look at where they are now versus what we're saying. There was discussion also raised by several of the board members after the fact on the nonprofit, and I And I would concur with council member Witten and Jaren that we need to bring that forward here because it addresses one of our own issues that we had had as far as staff attending. And then finally, one last item that you should be aware of, that they believe that an additional $45,000 will be needed for blackouts and move-ups through the holidays. $22,000 was allocated. They will revisit this. And there was a letter from the union saying that that number could go up even more as a number of firemen are already testing out of Eastside Fire and Rescue due to the uncertainty with MAMMISH.
Thank you. From my point of view, at the last PEC meeting, the nominations for next year were announced. Tom Vance will be returning to the Regional Transit Committee. Don Jaren will be on the PSRC Executive Board and also the PSRC Transportation Policy I will continue with the Seattle-King County Economic Development Committee, otherwise formerly known as Enterprise Seattle, and also as a voting member on the Growth Management Policy Council. We had a discussion last time about the upcoming decision on the transfers, the waste transfer center issue. I got direction from you guys, get there. The whole thing got postponed. They are still planning, going ahead with a decision fairly soon though. This last week, council members Vance, Jaren and I also attended the National League of Cities Committee, National League of Cities Convention, which is held here in Seattle. Good meeting, 3,300 locally elected officials from around the country in attendance. Seattle gave a very good, a very good show for itself. A lot of interesting discussion, a lot of good networking. The, the best part of these things is the informal conversations that go on.
Tom, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I would add that at the, at the National League of Cities, other organizations also meet, and I should mention, Mayor Odell hasn't mentioned it, he was elected to be the first vice chair of the Western Municipal Association, which includes, well, I don't know, every western state, pretty, almost to Colorado, I think, or including Colorado.
Basically, as far east as North Dakota, going south to Colorado, Arizona and Nevada.
Next year or the year after, you would become chair?
I think it's the year after.
Year after. So congratulations to Mayor Odell.
Thank you. Another thing to do. I had a lot of help from my Washington delegation friends on having that happen.
It was ours.
Last thing I have before we recess to go into executive session is a public service announcement. Sammy Awards are open until December 1st. If you, nominations are, that is. If you have someone you know who you think is worthy of a nomination for the Sammy Awards, please get your, your nomination in at the Sammy Awards website. It's sammyawards.org. Thank you very much. So we now have city manager.
I have a long report, but I'm going to make it short. I got one item that I need to get a direction, that the rest can wait. We're getting requests from the folks around the northeast 42nd barricade. And it's not in our work plan to do any work on this thing, nor is it in the 2014 work plan. I am going to direct staff for those requesting to say that it is not in our work plan this year or next year unless council members want me to put that in the work plan to start working on the removal of that barricade.
Nancy? We're going to have two new council members who might, I suggested.
Bring it back in January.
But that we bring it up for confirmation or not at the retreat.
Okay. Then our response will be that we don't have it in our plan this year. Next year, we'll talk with the council in January or February.
I would agree with that.
Okay. That, that's good. We can go to executive session. And I also decided to take one item off on that so we can make a short executive session, maybe 20 minutes.
And you're going to need to repeat what it's about?
It's about potential litigation.
Okay. Council will now go into executive session for 20 minutes for two issues dealing with potential litigation. We anticipate no action upon our return. opposed? Thank you, Derek. We're out there.
Thank you, council. We accomplished a lot today.